Can everybody settle down, please? Everybody settle down, please. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Finance. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go to the back of the room to fill out a testimony slip. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach the dais. I repeat, no one is to approach the dais. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, good morning. I'm Councilmember Brennan. I chair the Committee on Finance. Thanks for being here today. Thanks to all my colleagues, advocates, and agency staff who worked hard to make this hearing possible. We've been joined this morning, of course, by our Speaker, Councilmembers Brewer, Williams, Nurse, Salam, and Moya on Zoom, as well as Councilmember Powers. What we're talking about today might sound technical, property tax enforcement reform, but this is something very, very real to people, their homes. It's about how the city collects what it's owed without pushing working people out of their neighborhoods. It's about finding that balance between accountability and compassion. Since 1996, the city has used something called the tax lien sale to collect unpaid property taxes, water bills, and other charges. The idea was simple: if you fall behind, the city sells your debt to a private trust and then tries to collect on that debt. But too often, the system has punished people who were already struggling, especially black and brown homeowners, seniors, and working-class families who had just hit a rough patch and fell behind on their bills. Instead of helping them get back on track, the process has sometimes opened the door to bad actors, confusing rules, and unnecessary foreclosures. That's not fair, and that's not what city government should be doing. That's why today's hearing is so important. We're considering a package of bills that came out of discussions from the Temporary Task Force on Lien Sale, to the group of council members, city agencies, and community voices who rolled up their sleeves years ago to ask, "How do we make this system fairer, smarter, and more humane?" Before I get into the bills, I want to thank Speaker Adrienne Adams for her leadership on this issue for many, many years, and for being the prime sponsor of these, one of these key reforms that continues to build on our partnership to reform the lien sale process. Madam Speaker, I invite you to give your opening statement.
Thank you very much, Chair Brennan. Too many years, I might add. Welcome, everyone, and good morning. Thank you once again, Chair Brennan, for leading today's public hearing on a package of five bills that will transform the tax lien sale process, improving the city's ability to collect outstanding taxes while protecting communities and homeowners from unnecessary displacement. For decades, the city's tax lien sale has been a singularly focused enforcement tool that has resulted in black, Latino, and Asian New Yorkers disproportionately losing their hard-earned homes and assets. This has a major cost on the economic health and public safety of our city and its neighborhoods that too many administrations have failed to adequately acknowledge and resolve. As Speaker and the longtime representative for Council District 28 in Southeast Queens, I understand the delicate balance our city needs to strike between collecting revenues to pay for city services while also making sure we do not displace or endanger homeowners, tenants, and our diverse communities. Homeowners in my district and communities of color throughout our city have too often been placed in jeopardy of losing their homes due to the lien sale and other predatory actions. My district, along with others with a high share of black homeowners, has long been one of the epicenters of the lien sale, which only intensifies the pressures they face in trying to hold on to their homes. When our homeowners are put at risk, it undermines housing affordability, community stability, and the equity and generational wealth that families have built over many generations. At the same time, we recognize the importance of having an efficient system for collecting outstanding municipal debts and ensuring tax delinquent properties are returned to productive use. Last year, the council enacted laws that begin to reform the city's tax enforcement structure from a one-size-fits-all program to one that seeks to better protect at-risk homeowners by creating more diversion opportunities for them to avoid the lien sale, and most importantly, avoid foreclosure. Foreclosures come with steep financial and human costs that impact entire communities. Homeowners face not just displacement, legal fees, and loss of equity, but also a cascade of longer-term consequences. Research has shown that foreclosure correlates with higher food insecurity, impacts on physical and mental health, and greater housing instability. Foreclosure should be the last option when all others have failed, but unfortunately, under the current tax lien system, it's not. Every foreclosure of a home should be subject to review and analysis to ensure that every option has been provided to the owner with the support they need to make an informed decision. The city must do better. That's why today, the council is holding this hearing on a package of bills that would collectively shift the city towards having a city-established land bank that prioritizes community needs and avoids unnecessary displacement of homeowners to handle liens. This land bank would replace the current use of financial trusts chartered in Delaware that are unaccountable to New Yorkers and don't care if their efforts mean long-term New Yorkers lose their homes. My bill, Introduction 1407, works in conjunction with Councilmember Brewer's bill, Introduction 570A, to have a land bank take over tax lien enforcement and handle the delicate stage of when to pursue foreclosures. A land bank would be charged with taking a more holistic approach to enforcement, creating a better balance between the need to collect revenues with the economic and social costs of failing to protect homeowners from displacement. Recognizing that setting up a land bank may take some time, my bill still allows enforcement to continue by providing flexibility to sell to other entities in the interim, but only after approval from the council, to ensure that these new entities will approach tax enforcement in a more thoughtful way. Finally, Introduction 1407 requires additional communication to property owners about debts and sets a floor for when an owner-occupied home can be foreclosed on. Going forward, debts would have to be the lesser of $200,000 or 20% of the property's market value before the home is subject to this final stage of foreclosure. Our city can collect taxes and water payments without destroying wealth in communities of color that are already experiencing the impacts of racial wealth gaps. The notion that our city cannot is an obsession with maintaining the status quo that's not working for too many New Yorkers. It's past time for the city to move away from this short-sighted approach and instead implement a real pathway that supports homeowners in resolving debts. Our city should prevent, our city should prevent the instability created in communities by displacement and foreclosure. If properties do face foreclosure, they should serve a housing or community purpose rather than becoming blights in our neighborhoods, like they do under the current process, and I am a perfect witness to that. These reforms, along with the other bills under consideration today, do not prevent the city from collecting revenue or discourage property owners from paying their taxes and water bills. Instead, they will safeguard our ability to simultaneously collect revenues and protect homeowners by making tax enforcement fairer and more just. I look forward to hearing from the administration and members of the public about how the city can create a better system of collecting municipal debts that protects our communities and homeowners rather than harming them. Thank you very much for your attention, and I turn it back over to Chair Brennan.
Thank you, Speaker. We've also been joined by Majority Leader Farias. And now I want to talk about the bills in front of us today. When someone falls behind on their property taxes or water bills, the city places a lien on that property. Under the current system, once the debt is unpaid and reaches a certain amount, the city sends warnings about further enforcement. If the debt is not paid within 90 days, the city sells that lien to a private trust, and that trust hires collection agencies to recover the money owed. If the homeowner still can't pay within seven months, foreclosure proceedings begin. Within three years, most properties have paid or been foreclosed on. While the system has been efficient in collecting revenue, its blind reliance on foreclosures have resulted in unavoidable bad outcomes, especially during a housing crisis. It's caused unnecessary foreclosures. It's caused displacement. It's wiped out intergenerational wealth. It's left properties in the hands of predatory actors and fundamentally hurt communities that can least afford it. So here's what we want to do about it. We actually started last year when we made extensive reforms to create numerous options for homeowners to resolve their debt to avoid being sold to this private trust that handles foreclosures. These reforms were the most extensive ones on the tax lien sale since it was created back in 1996. However, these reforms did not address how this private trust operates and handles foreclosures. Instead, we set up a task force to look at this trust, to identify potential reforms that would allow the city to still collect revenues to provide services while reducing the negative impacts of foreclosures. When we passed the original package of lien sale reform, we said this was a work in progress, and that's why we're here today. Intro 570A would establish a city land bank. This bill would require the city to take steps needed to create a city land bank, a nonprofit entity that can control, that can take control of the tax foreclosure process to ensure that homeowners have had adequate opportunity to resolve their debts and take steps to ensure that foreclosed properties are put back to good use. Land banks are used all over the country to fight blight, preserve affordable housing, and make sure that foreclosed homes don't just sit vacant or get sold off to speculators. With our version of the land bank, we can call it a lien bank. We can make sure that foreclosures are used only when necessary and that foreclosed properties end up benefiting the community and not a drag on them. Intro 1407 would prove upon the conditions of future tax lien sales. Right now, the Department of Finance has broad discretion to sell tax liens through 2028. This bill would change that. It limits that broad authority only when selling to the lien bank. For any other sale, the Finance Commissioner must come back to the council for approval, so there's oversight, accountability, and transparency. In addition, it sets the lien bank up for success by removing the sunset provisions. The bill also adds additional notification requirements for property owners who have their liens sold, and also prevents foreclosures on owner-occupied homes when the debt is of minimal level. This would also allow the city to continue to enforce taxes and water bills with no interruption, but ensure that the city is taking affirmative steps to improve the foreclosure process by transferring these operations to the lien bank. Intro 1411 is the condo board notification. This one is simple, but it's important. It requires the Department of Finance to notify condo boards when a lien sale is about to be sold on a unit in their building. One of the harder-to-enforce types of properties are condo units, like parking spots or storage units that have minimal value to anyone living outside of the condo development. This small change would give condo boards the chance to step in, help find a solution, or at least be aware of things before they escalate. Intro 1419, reporting on long unresolved liens. This bill brings transparency and data into the process. It requires the Department of Finance to report every year on properties that have unresolved lien sales for more than 36 months, which, three years. These properties are often effectively abandoned and often become eyesores and safety hazards for the surrounding community under this bill, 1419. The Department of Finance must share that list with the council, post it online, and send it to other city agencies so they can inspect those sites and report back on what's happening. This is about shining light on a system that's been operating in the dark for too long. And finally, Intro 1420, transferring lien sales to the city land bank. Once the city land bank is established, this bill would require the Commissioner of Finance to transfer all liens currently held in trust to that land bank within six months. That means, instead of those liens sitting in a private fund where the goal is profit, they'd move into a public entity designed to preserve affordability, create stability, and reinvest in neighborhoods. And if that can't happen, the Department of Finance would have to explain to the city council why. Okay, taken together, these bills represent a major step forward toward a fairer, more transparent system, one that still holds people accountable but doesn't treat homeowners like revenue sources for private investors and doesn't ignore what happens to a property after the city has collected its debt. At the end of the day, this is about protecting New Yorkers who are doing their best to stay afloat, helping stabilize communities, all while making sure that the city collects what it's owed to them to keep services running. We can do both, and we should. So I want to thank the sponsors of these bills, of course, the members of the task force, Department of Finance, Department of Environmental Protection, HPD, all the advocates who have been pushing for these reforms for many years. This is how we build a fairer city, by making sure every part of government, even the unglamorous parts, reflect our values of fairness, transparency, and compassion. Before we turn to testimony, I want to thank our staff at the Finance Committee, Richard Lee, Emra Adev, Nick Connell, Delara Dimnaku, Brian Sarfo, Andrew Wilber, and Lyle Reed, for all their hard work behind the scenes in getting us ready for this day, and all their work on the lien sale reform for the past couple of years. Now I'm going to ask the committee counsel, Brian Sarfo, to swear everyone in, and we can start.
Good morning. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
I go.
You may begin.
Hang on one sec, guys. Do you have opening statements? Okay. All right, let's just, let's, yeah. We've also been joined by Councilmember Carr. Okay, councilmembers, you want to start with Sandy? You can read your opening statement.
Sure. I recognize there's a long line of opening remarks, so I'll try to be brief. Last year, I proudly cosponsored Local Law 82 and appreciate many of the conversations we had over the last about two years about this. And I also want to thank the advocates and my colleagues in the council for all of their work on this. For the first time, low- and moderate-income homeowners were given real off-ramps, opportunities to resolve tax delinquencies in a way that is fair to both the homeowner and the city, and that helps keep families out of the lien sale. But despite these reforms, this year's lien sale looks a little too familiar. Nearly half of all Class 1 homes on the list are concentrated in just 10 of the city's 51 council districts, including my own and the speakers. These are predominantly minority communities where homeowners are already under immense pressure from gentrification, displacement, and predatory investors, which is a real crisis that both the city and state have failed to prioritize with action. Over the past year, I co-chaired the Tax Lien Sale Task, Local Law 82, where council and administration appointees met monthly to analyze how the current system works, who holds what power, how decisions are made, how we can align our tax enforcement with the shared goals of compliance, preservation, and equity. While we agreed on many of the final recommendations, during these discussions, I did see a reluctance to fully explore new ideas, even as every single one of us acknowledged that the current system is flawed, people are falling through the cracks, and people are losing their homes. And that brings us to the bills we're discussing today. I won't go over them all. Together, these bills will bring what the city has failed to do, which is to move away from an opaque, trust-based lien sale process and bring municipal debt enforcement back into public hands. These reforms pair accountability and transparency with real support for homeowners, especially black, brown, and senior homeowners, ensuring we no longer sacrifice our people just for the sake of revenue collection. And I want to double down on what my speaker emphasized, which is that these bills, with these bills, 99% of tax enforcement will remain within the Department of Finance. Only a small fraction of properties ever reach the lien sale stage. DOF will continue to have both hands on the wheel to ensure compliance. The incoming administration, like those before it, has promised comprehensive property tax reform, and additionally, the incoming mayor-elect has stated many times that he supports ending the current tax lien sale system, which is good news for New Yorkers. So I want to thank you all. I thank the other members of the task force for the conversations you've had. I look forward to a productive and honest conversation about how we can finally build a tax enforcement system that prioritizes both fiscal responsibility and housing stability. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. I too want to thank the chair and the speaker, and certainly Councilmember Nurse for her work, Emra Adev in particular, and Sam Goldsmith from my office. And I do want to say that the two commissioners sitting here are the best in the best. And I know you may disagree with some of this. I respect that, but I do think, as you heard from Councilmember Nurse and others, that this, particularly into 570A, it starts a process of this land bank that will take over the final stage of tax enforcement, but I don't think that it will make enforcement and the city unable to collect their funds. And I think that's what we want to say that over and over again. So much thought has gone into that. The core aspect of what we're now calling a lien bank is it's a mission-driven entity to address the delinquency of the properties that have a more holistic view than the current trust model. The trust, we understandably, is focused on revenue collection. Goals that are set in local law mean that the lien bank will focus on revenue collection plus preservation of homeownership and prevention of tenant displacement, plus maximizing productive use of property. And something that I've worked on my entire life is more transparency, with a mayor and a speaker providing oversight. This additional accountability, unlike the trust, the lien bank is subject to open meeting laws and other sunshine law provisions that apply to all New York State not-for-profits. And in addition, there'll be an annual report from the entity through its chairperson, and it will be a written form, a report to the municipality, and I believe also a hearing. So even though there may be some concern about the fact that it wouldn't collect revenue, I disagree. I think it will. 1411A, which you heard earlier, would require the Department of Finance to notify the board of managers of a condo. If the Department of Finance intends to sell a tax lien that encumbers a unit within the condo, is the second bill, and I think that makes sense because we know that in some cases, there is a, parking spots and storage units are sold as additions to residential units, and they're often hard for the city to collect on. At the same time, there will be someone outside of the development making sure that information is shared. So these two bills, in my opinion, along with the entire package, not only do they continue what the trust has emphasized, which is revenue collection, they also make it, I hope, easier for those who are experiencing this incredible hardship to be able to get something that is satisfactory to them and to the city, because in some cases, if there is a lien necessary, hopefully, we will get affordable housing and not the highest purchaser. And then, second, both bills focus on transparency, which is what I think government should be all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. Okay. Turn it over to the commissioners for their opening statements. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Brennan. Speaker Adams, members of the Committee on Finance, my name is Preston Niblick, and I'm the Commissioner of the New York City Department of Finance, and I'm here to speak today about the five bills being heard and the impact of the changes being contemplated. I'm joined today also by Deputy Commissioner for Customer Operations and co-chair of the Temporary Task Force, Annette Hill. In June of last year, the city council passed Local Law 82, reauthorizing the sale of tax liens through December 31st, 2028, and at the same time implementing the most far-reaching reforms to the lien sale process since its inception in 1996. These reforms were intended to shift the focus from a one-size-fits-all enforcement model, as the speaker noted, to one which distinguishes owners who are genuinely struggling to pay from those who are simply seeking to avoid paying. Our goal was to protect homeowners and help them resolve their debt rather than simply focus on collection and enforcement. We created an easy-exit option for low- to moderate-income homeowners who need more time to resolve their debt. We expanded our payment plan options to include a circuit breaker plan. We gave homeowners more time to apply for payment plans and exemptions. And we allocated $2 million for intensive outreach, such as in-person door-knocking, community events, postcards, robocalls, and other direct owner contacts. For eligible homeowners whose liens were sold, we offer a waiver from the surcharge to ease repayment. Our first lien sale under the new laws was conducted this last spring, and the results were highly successful. Of the nearly 30,000 liens on the initial 90-day notice list, 85% were removed from lien sale, from the list before sale. In total, $405 million in payments for delinquent property taxes, warrants, sewer charges, and other debt were made prior to the lien sale itself, which added an additional $187 million for the city. In total, therefore, this year's lien sale resulted in a collection of over $590 million in outstanding taxes and charges. Local Law 82 also created a temporary task force composed of representatives of the city council and the administration, which met several times over the summer and issued, spring and summer, and issued final recommendations on September 15th. I want to express my appreciation to Councilmember Nurse and to Deputy Commissioner Hill for co-chairing the task force and to all the participants for their contributions. Two of today's legislative proposals enact some of the task force's recommendations. I'll start with Intro 1411, which enacts a recommendation to notify, in addition to the individual owners of condominium units, the boards of directors of residential condominium developments, and their managing agents about the existence of a lien on a secondary-use condo, such as a parking space or a storage unit. We think this is a great proposal, and we fully endorse Intro 1411. We also support Intro 1419 regarding reporting, which we, also one of the recommendations of the task force. We have a few proposed revisions that we'll relate to separately, but overall, we support this. One of the issues discussed in the task force meetings was the role of a land bank. The remaining bills under consideration today address the creation and functioning of a land bank, and here we have more fundamental concerns. Land banks, as described in the legislative intent of Article 16 of the state not-for-profit corporation law, and I quote, "are one of the tools that can be utilized by communities to facilitate the return of vacant, abandoned, and tax-delinquent properties to productive use. The primary focus of land bank operations is the acquisition of real property that is tax-delinquent, tax-foreclosed, vacant, or abandoned, and the use of tools authorized in this article to eliminate the harms and liabilities caused by such properties." End quote. This description of the role of land banks is a much different scope from how New York City uses the tax lien sale for property tax enforcement. The land bank law makes repeated reference to vacant and abandoned properties, but most properties subject to the tax lien sale are neither vacant nor abandoned nor blight on the community. Our goal with the tax lien sale is not primarily to address abandonment or blight, but to resolve debt owed to the city. For that reason, we think it would create an inherent tension if the same entity, whose goal is to acquire, develop, and dispose of property for productive community purposes, were also in charge of tax enforcement. We fully support the goal of avoiding foreclosure whenever possible, and we have proposals to put forward to further that goal, particularly in the period after the lien sale. But the land bank would actually be empowered to foreclose on tax-delinquent properties for development purposes through the in-rem process, and indeed, that would be one of its main tools. It does not seem to us like a good idea to combine the enforcement function, which includes foreclosure as an option, but which we are pledged to, excuse me, which we are pledged to try to avoid whenever possible, with the development function, where foreclosure is in fact a primary tool for the transfer of properties. Keeping these functions separate would allow us to maintain effective and compassionate enforcement while we develop a vehicle whose singular purpose would be to promote opportunities for affordable housing and other community development, including through the acquisition of tax-delinquent, vacant, distressed, or abandoned properties. For these reasons, we cannot support Intros 570, 1407, or 1420, which would create an entity that we believe is ill-equipped to perform either of the functions envisioned for it well, and is drafted would effectively end the lien sale for the remaining years of the authority established in Local Law 82. We can, however, act immediately to bring increased transparency, case management, and access to appropriate resources for owners who may be facing foreclosure, so as to ensure that no homeowner need lose their home for unpaid property taxes or water-in-sewer charges. The council and the administration worked together for over a year to implement far-reaching reforms to the lien sale process, and while it is possible to envision a future process whereby certain properties are diverted from the lien sale, as statutorily distressed buildings are now, creating the mechanisms for that require careful thought and legislative drafting. Moreover, a new mayor-elect and a new council will soon take office, and their voices deserve to be heard on these proposals. I look forward to further discussions with you, and I'm happy to take your questions later. later.
Good morning, Chair Brandon, Speaker Adams, members of the Finance Committee. I'm Rohit T. Agarwal, Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection and the city's chief climate officer. I'm joined by DEP Chief Financial Officer Nerissa Morey and Deputy Commissioners Albert Kramer and Beth DeFalco. We appreciate the opportunity to speak about the city's annual lien sale. Thanks to the thoughtful reforms passed by the Council last year, the 2025 lien sale was the most transparent and straightforward ever for property owners, especially those who are struggling. Homeowners were given more notice, more options, and more help. DEP also went above and beyond to help property owners avoid the sale entirely. Our water system depends on people paying their bills. When some people don't pay, everyone else must make up the difference, or DEP must invest less in the system. If DEP lacks the ability to enforce against non-paying water users, the reality is that some people will take advantage of that loophole. That will ultimately mean higher water rates for every other New Yorker, or fewer investments in the infrastructure that keeps our city safe and resilient. That's simply not fair. DEP provides the clean drinking water that every New Yorker depends on, treats our wastewater, and manages stormwater across the five boroughs. We're responsible for a 10-year, $33 billion capital plan, including City Water Tunnel 3, the new disinfection facility at Hillview Reservoir, and stormwater projects in every borough. All of this is funded entirely by the $4.5 billion New Yorkers pay each year in water bills. The Water Board sets rates to cover our costs, and the Water Finance Authority issues bonds backed by those payments. There is no general tax revenue and very little in state and federal funding. It is a closed system. Water bills fund the water system. So if collections fall short, we have two choices: raise rates or cut investments. There's no outside money to fill the gap. The good news is that most New Yorkers pay on time, and we work hard to help those who struggle. DEP offers multiple affordability programs. The Home Water Assistance Program, serving nearly 100,000 low-income homeowners, provides annual credits of up to $159. The Multifamily Water Assistance Program helps affordable housing and saves properties up to $250 per unit each year. Leak forgiveness and discounted prepayment programs help those facing unexpected bills. In the past year, we expanded eligibility for these programs to tens of thousands more homes and apartments. And if someone does fall behind, we offer flexible payment agreements, up to 10 years to repay, often with no money down. That's more generous than almost any water utility in the nation. Our goal is always to help people stay in good standing before enforcement ever becomes necessary. When a property owner doesn't pay, DEP has few enforcement tools. We can shut off service for single-family homes, but we avoid doing that for multifamily properties because we don't want to punish tenants. Our other option is to sue or to use the lien sale. It's important to note that the lien sale is about enforcement, not punishment. Entering a payment plan, again, with no money down, removes a property from the lien sale list. We also remove customers who have legitimate disputes or other hardships. Leading up to this year's sale, DEP, DOF, and HPD carried out a record number, a record amount of outreach: nearly half a million mailings, 77,000 phone calls, 6,500 door knocks, plus dozens of community events with council members. And it worked. Only 0.1% of all DEP customers ultimately had a lien sold, just one in 1,000. Yet, the process brought in $374 million in overdue revenue into good standing, $180 million in cash payments, $172 million in payment agreements, and $22 million from the sale itself. That's the point. The threat of the lien sale works. It motivates payment, keeps rates fair, and maintains the integrity of the water system. And over the last 10 years, there have only been 59 foreclosures, total, with any water debt. Without enforcement, people stop paying, not only because they can't afford to, but because they realize there's no consequence if they don't. We had one case where a household stopped paying their water bills for several years while at the same time putting in a swimming pool. They only paid when we threatened a water shut-off. When lien sale authority expired in 2006, DEP lost $100 million in one year. This led the Water Board to plan for an 18.5% mid-year rate hike in 2007 to make up for that lost revenue. Happily, the lien sale was reauthorized, revenues stabilized, and the rate hike was avoided. Similar issues emerged more recently. During the years without lien sale authority after 2019, unpaid water bills doubled, from $600 million to $1.2 billion. Restarting the sale in 2025 helped traverse that trend and allowed us to keep this year's rate increase to just 3.7% instead of the 8.5% we expected. That's real savings for every New Yorker, including renters who benefit from lower operating costs in apartment buildings. And let me reiterate, that change in our proposed rate hike earlier this year was only due to the revenues we found from this lien sale. The Office of Management and Budget Financial Impact statement estimates that legislation under consideration today could reduce DEP's annual revenues by $105 to $150 million. To make up that loss, we'd have only two options. One is to cut capital investment. A recurring loss of $105 to $150 million in annual revenue translates to about $1.75 to $2.5 billion in less capital investment. While many, much of our capital program, in fact, about a third of our capital program is mandated, like Hillview Reservoir or the Gowanus Canal cleanup, others are not. Unfortunately, this means cuts would likely fall on stormwater and flood protection projects, the kind we know New Yorkers are demanding and the kind that I hope you all appreciate has been my top priority in my four years in this job. This includes projects dear to all of you: $2.78 billion in the southeast Queens sewer upgrades, the $390 million Bushwick sewer expansion, Councilmember Nurse, that we worked so hard on together, $146 million for East New York in the Jewel Streets that we just announced a couple of weeks ago, and the $51 million drainage project in Diker Heights that was actually the first project under our current long-term stormwater resilience plan. These are the very projects that protect New Yorkers from the floods and extreme weather we know are coming more often. Alternative two is to raise rates. If we believe that our current capital plan must be kept intact, we expect to need to raise rates to make up for revenue shortfalls. To make up for the revenue this set of legislation may put at jeopardy could require a mid-year rate increase or an additional increase over and above the 7% currently forecast for FY2027, which would take effect on July 1 of next year. We take this issue seriously enough that we have convened a meeting of the New York City Water Board, which sets rates for next week. While we have not yet decided what to ask for, this would be the first step in setting in motion a mid-year rate hike to make up for lost revenue. This is a prophylactic step in case the Council moves forward with this suite of legislation, but we hope it will not be necessary, in which case we will terminate the process. We support the Council's goals of transparency and fairness, and we've worked closely with you to make these real in last year's reforms. But we are deeply concerned that the bills being considered today, particularly 1407 and the proposals to transfer lien authority to a land bank, 1420 and 570, would effectively undermine the lien sale. Requiring council approval for each sale or putting enforcement in the hands of an outside entity would create conflicts of interest and uncertainty that could destabilize the entire system. Some advocates have even endorsed these bills by saying they would end the lien sale. If that's the case, we must plan and budget as though the lien sale no longer exists, which would mean higher rates or slower climate investments. We do, however, support reasonable improvements such as those in Intros 1411 and 1419, which enhance reporting and notification. DEP is always willing to make this process clearer, more compassionate, and more accountable, so long as it still works. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this legislation. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, Chair Brandon, Speaker Adams, and New York City Committee on Finance members. My name is Kim Darka, and I'm the Deputy Commissioner of the Office of Development at HPD. Today, we'll be testifying on Intro 570A, a bill to create a land bank in New York City. I will speak to the bill's stated intent to maximize the productive use of property to meet the needs of the surrounding community and the city at large as it relates to affordable housing. We defer to other agency partners on the implications of this bill for non-housing uses. As an agency, HPD's goal is always to meet New Yorkers' need for affordable housing with urgency and efficiency. In service of our goal, HPD has a number of tools that afford us the flexibility to support acquisition and preservation or construction of affordable housing. While we are always open to exploring new options, New York City is fortunate to have the authority, resources, and partners to acquire property for affordable housing. We acquire and preserve or construct affordable housing through a variety of new construction and preservation programs. More specifically, our programs offer a combination of property tax benefits, low-cost financing, and programs specifically designed to support acquisition. For example, the New York City Acquisition Fund is an over $200 million fund that provides acquisition bridge financing of land and buildings. A program that we have worked closely with City Council on, the Neighborhood Pillars Program, provides construction and permanent financing to support acquisition and rehabilitation of distressed properties for stabilization and long-term affordability. Along with HPD financing, we created the Neighborhood Pillars Down Payment Assistance Fund to provide technical and down payment assistance for qualified nonprofit and MWBE partners. Regardless of the program, HPD works with the parties seeking to acquire property to ensure the cost is reasonable and there's a viable financing plan in place. HPD has confidence that these tools work in enabling the city to support the acquisition and construction and rehabilitation of affordable housing in the short, medium, and long term. HPD also partners with Neighborhood Restore, HDFC, an organization along with its affiliate nonprofit entities, Neighborhood Renewal, HDFC Restored Homes, HDFC Restoring Communities, HDFC Preserving Seating Neighborhoods, HDFC and Project Rebuild, that work with HPDM programs that seek to foster neighborhood stabilization by efficiently transitioning properties from physical and financial instability to responsible new ownership. To effectuate these stabilization goals, Neighborhood Restore or an affiliate often serves as an interim owner partnering with a qualified developer and manager to manage the property during this phase and secure the financing and other approvals necessary to construct or renovate housing. Neighborhood Restore or its, an affiliate entity, has fulfilled the stabilization role in various programs and initiatives since the late 1990s, including as part of Third Party Transfer Program, Affordable Neighborhood Cooperative Program, Cluster Conversion Program, Community Restoration Fund, and Project Rebuild, along with a number of other programs. While we appreciate the previous discussions with Council on the idea of a land bank and its goals, we continue to believe it's important to carefully assess the potential unintended consequences of this bill, included added costs, delays, and duplication of existing functions. These include staffing and administrative costs for developing a new entity, carrying costs for long-term property management, and potential market distortion, and higher acquisition costs where the city is directly negotiating, to name a few. We're open to continuing to work with Council to discuss any gaps in our current tools that a land bank could address with the goal of putting forward policy solutions that strengthen the efficiency and effectiveness of our affordable housing work. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you all for your testimony. We've also been joined by Councilmembers Farias, Sanchez, and Lewis. I'm now going to turn it to our Speaker for her first round of questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to start out by dealing with the articles, and we all read things. So right off the bat, I need to comment on the language coming from members of the administration claiming that these bills would cause massive revenue shortfalls. This is a flagrant misrepresentation of what these bills do. Yesterday, the DEP Commissioner was quoted in a New York Post article that claimed this package of bills would end water debt enforcement. That's simply not true. OMB actually provided a fiscal impact estimate that included a threat that the DEP would stop work on critical capital projects, which the Commissioner, you just referenced in your opening statement, and Councilmember Brandon, Nurse, and Sanchez's districts, and I believe Councilmember Williams in my district as well. But to be clear, there's absolutely nothing in these bills that require the city to stop enforcing taxes or water bills. Our staff have communicated that fact repeatedly to members of the administration, including staff at DOF, DEP, and OMB. Fundamentally, this bill simply requires an extra layer of review by the Council to ensure that tax-foreclosed properties do not end up in the hands of slum lords and to prevent needless displacement of homeowners and tenants. It's really frustrating that as we try to have meaningful conversations about how to improve tax enforcement, the administration turns around and willfully misrepresents the truth. Just had to get that off my chest. So if there is any place any Commissioner can point out, in the specific section of the bill that says that the city has to stop tax and water enforcement, please point that out to us.
If I may, I think our concern about 1407 in particular, Madam Speaker, is the annual resolution. And I think our concern is there's a lot of preparation and a lot of work that goes into each lien sale. There's programming that has to happen, there are laws that have to be, rules that have to be drafted, et cetera. We've already begun work, you know, in preparation for next year's lien sale. I think our fear is that if we have to come each year to the Council for a resolution, we kind of reopen the negotiation of the terms of the lien sale right after we reauthorized it for four years. And I guess we don't, you know, we view that annual resolution as something that was, if we have to renegotiate every single time, in practical terms, we won't be able to do a lien sale every year. That's the nature of our concern.
I absolutely appreciate your explanation and the conversations that we've all been having. That said, the misrepresentation in the article was extreme in blatantly calling out my bill in particular for something that it is not. And I just wanted to get that on the record. That's why I was asking specifically where anyone that gave any input to that article had specific information where it's stated in the legislation that the city would have to stop tax and water enforcement, which is something that this Council is not stating in any pieces of legislation presented.
Madam Speaker, I will also point out that, I don't know which quote you are referencing about--
It was a New York Post article.
--but, as I've said, and as Commissioner Niblock has said, the lien sale, from our point of view, functions as a package. The ultimate step of foreclosure, as I've pointed out, has literally occurred only 59 times in 10 years. But it is the whole process that brings in the revenue. We started this year's lien sale with nearly 30,000 water-delinquent properties. All of those had been receiving monthly or quarterly bills for at least two years, reminding them they were overdue. More than a quarter of them only responded and either paid or acknowledged what their exemption status, what their dispute with us was. A quarter of them only did so when they got the first pre-lien warning, right? That phrase of the lien sale, which to most people says you are on the road to foreclosure, is a motivating factor. And so I think that is where our concern is. That is why OMB's FIS identified that large potential revenue impact to us. And every day, we have to translate our revenue into our capital budget. And I do not have a lot of projects. We have worked really hard over the last four years to create room in our budget so we could do stormwater resilience. And it's one of the reasons that we have focused so much on collections over the last four years, because that $1.2 billion in unpaid bills that we started with was hindering our ability to invest in the system. So that is the interconnection.
With all due respect, Commissioner, we are on board with continuing enforcement. And you're actually proving our point in what you just said about resolutions year after year, because with a lien bank, we'd have no need to do that. So I think that that would, in fact, accomplish the very task that we're all looking forward to, is not to have resolutions year after year. The lien bank would resolve that situation. I'm going to move on. The revenue impact that the administration is claiming leads us to believe that this administration wouldn't sell to a lien bank, nor would ever make a request to conduct another lien sale. And why would that be? And why would that be?
I think the revenue impact, there's a goal here, obviously, of collection and enforcement of unpaid taxes. And that, as I've said in the past, it's a matter of basic fairness as well. If we're not, if we don't have a mechanism for enforcement, people, to use the egregious example of the swimming pool builders, you know, there are people who could pay but who will not, who will take advantage of the system. The thrust of our reforms under Local Law 82 last year and our proposals this year to sort of extend some of that into the post lien sale period are to make sure that we are finding ways for owners who are genuinely struggling to resolve their debt without foreclosure. And I think, you know, again, to just mention the proposals we want to work with you on with respect to the post lien sale period, we think there's more intervention we could do here, especially when people are facing the threat of imminent foreclosure, to try and, again, find ways for them to avoid that. Our goal is always zero foreclosures. We don't, we're aware that every foreclosure is a trauma, and we don't want to go to the point of foreclosure, you know, in particular on homeowners. We want to find, work with you all to find ways to avoid that.
Yeah, we do agree with that. We are trying to keep enforcement. I think that's, you know, that's a point that's well-taken and actually a point that we've been driving at the council to make sure that that happens. Right now, the threshold of debt to sell tax liens on Class 1 homes is set at a relatively low level, $5,000 for property taxes, or as low as $3,000 for water charges. The administration has strenuously argued to keep thresholds low, out of concern that if thresholds were higher, it would be much harder for a property owner to resolve the debt. And there is, there is a lot of logic in that argument. We agree. However, I think that it's unconscionable for a homeowner to actually lose their home over a $3,000 unpaid water bill. That's preposterous. So putting aside what the law would allow, at one point, do you believe it's appropriate to foreclose on a homeowner's primary residence to enforce a tax lien?
I think the, with respect to the threshold that's in 1407, that's set in 1407, I think it's problematic to set essentially two thresholds. One, to be in the lien sale, and then another one for foreclosure, because it means that there's not really an incentive to address the debt if the foreclosure threshold is so much higher than the lien sale threshold. It makes the lien sale threshold kind of meaningless, frankly. I completely take the point that it is a tragedy that we should seek to avoid as much as possible, that anyone should lose their home over a bill that is manageable and payable. And when they have not, you know, willfully disregarded for years paying their debt, you know, there's no, there's no reason for that. And we think, again, we want to find as many ways as possible to work, to intervene, to find a route to make sure that does not happen. The recent case that was in the news about a homeowner lost their home over a $5,000 debt, honestly, you know, no one wanted that to happen. It shouldn't have to happen. And we are, the thrust of Local Law 82 and the further efforts that we can work on together, I think are to make sure that that does not happen again in the future.
I appreciate that, Commissioner, very much. How do you then balance the city's fiscal need to collect revenues with the negative impacts of foreclosure to homeowners?
Ultimately, I, we have to have foreclosure as the ultimate sanction. I mean, I'm duty-bound, right, as the Commissioner of Finance, to collect property taxes. And again, I view this as a matter of basic fairness. In the end of the day, I could not ever promise you that there would be zero foreclosures in situations like this. What I can promise you is that we will work with you every step of the way to find ways to avoid that happening.
Which, if any, city commissioners are aware of tax lien foreclosure actions against homeowners before they actually happen? And are they required to approve those foreclosure actions, and at what point?
There's no, once, once the liens are sold and they're under the, under the purview of the trust and the trust manager, we do oversee that. We oversee the servicers. They are empowered, they have all the rights under their contract, under the law, they have all the rights to collection that the city does. So they don't need to come back to us, and they don't come back to us, except occasionally there will be a marginal case where they'll come back to them, and they'll say like, listen, we need some guidance, legal guidance here, or, you know, we think there's possibly a resolution, do you want us to stop, et cetera? Or some, or one of you, or a member of the community group will bring that, those cases to us. But in general, we don't intervene or approve, or have any approval rights over foreclosure actions or other collection efforts, except what's spelled out in the contracts with the servicers.
So, it's really enforcement by the trust?
It is enforcement by the trust and the servicers, yes, which is overseen by the Department of Finance, OMB, and the Law Department.
And the trusts basically are empowered to collect as quickly as possible?
The trust, when a lien is sold, it is due and pay, under the law, it is due and payable within, at one year essentially afterwards. If there is, if the homeowner or the property owner continues to pay the interest, as is required, then there will be no foreclosure effort before that one-year mark. If they fail to pay the interest that is due each month, and they get a bill regularly, quarterly, quarterly from the servicer for the interest payments, if they fail to pay those, then foreclosure can begin sooner. I think you referenced seven months. That's sort of in the case where there is unpaid interest. But normally, it's one year before a foreclosure action will begin.
So, basically, there is no flexibility that's given for a homeowner, or the structure basically is to pay the interest?
Yes, correct. That's the, that's the terms of the lien sale. I'm going to ask Deputy Commissioner Hill to elaborate on this a little bit.
Yeah, hi, good morning. Generally, the servicers do offer payment plans to the homeowners, and they offer a payment plan up to three years with no payment down. They also have the ability to offer installment agreements after a foreclosure action has been filed against the property, as well as offer new payment plans to taxpayers previously defaulted on their payment plan. So they do have the ability to go into a payment agreement with the services.
What's your success rate?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but much, about half of the properties that do get sold go into some kind of payment agreement. And if they default, if they're delinquent more than 40, 30 days, and they're viewed for review, a letter is sent to the homeowner saying, you're delinquent. If it's more than 90 days, a second letter is sent, and also a phone call is made to tell them you're delinquent in your property agreement. And they offer them, do you want to go into a new plan? They could go into, if they're in default, they do give them a chance to go into another payment plan.
So the city basically is not involved in making the final decision when it comes to foreclosure at all, correct?
No, that's correct.
That is correct. Okay. That's interesting. One of the major thrusts of the reforms to the pre lien sale process in Local Law 82 was to provide multiple off-ramps for homeowners to avoid the lien sale. This was backed by $2 million in outreach funding to make sure that homeowners know their options with enough time to use them. How effective do you think these reforms were in removing owner-occupied homes from this year's lien sale?
I think we had a higher rate of removal of properties from the original 90-day Lotus than we had in six, the six previous lien sales. It was 85%, and the average has been a little below that. I don't have the statistics right in front of me, although Annette probably does. But, I mean, I think we were happy with the outcome in terms of the number of liens that were resolved or removed prior to the lien sale date. And I think a lot of that had to do with the outreach efforts. We've been, we started in last month or September, working with our outreach partners from all the agencies, from the Mayor's Public Engagement Unit, from the Center for New York City Neighborhoods, to sort of do a lessons learned from the outreach and make sure that we improve the process continually as we go forward. So I think we, overall, we counted it as a success in terms of how we did in getting people out of the lien sale.
Do you have a number, Commissioner, on how many owner-occupied properties were sold in this year's lien sale?
Let me look, if I may, I'd like to go back to the point about our role in exercising foreclosure options here. I think, you know, we don't get involved because we want to have an impartial, rule-based administration of this process. And again, you know, we fully support the goal of zero foreclosure and want to work with you all in every way we can to find, you know, as many paths as possible to avoid that. I'm not sure a land bank, if it had enforcement authority, would be in a different position, necessarily. They would still have to administer and ultimately be willing to foreclose. And I think my concern, as I expressed, was that that would actually be a tension if the enforcement mechanism and the sort of development mechanism of a land bank were housed in the same entity. They'd have a, sort of be working at cross purposes with themselves. I believe that, you know, we've talked about properties that we didn't, we wanted to be able to essentially find another disposition for. I think we can do that while preserving what we believe is a very effective and efficient enforcement mechanism that we have now. We can introduce more transparency and council role into that mechanism and still have, you know, a separate land bank and discuss what are the parameters of properties that we might want to take out of the, for potential foreclosure action, or were vacant, abandoned, distressed, et cetera, and move them into a pathway to more productive use.
I think what I'm, what I'm feeling, what I'm hearing from you is a lot of, perhaps, the conversations that have gone on around this issue, you know, and myself having been through this now with several administrations, unfortunately, I might add. But continuing to progress each time we go through these exercises and wanting to come to the right decisions when we're affecting so many people. And we want to make sure that so many people are indeed protected. So the tensions that you're mentioning with a land bank, basically, we feel the same tensions right here in this hearing and speaking once again about this and trying to hammer this out the right way. But we really do need to face it head-on. We don't need to ignore it at all. Someone has to actually do that hard work of navigating when to foreclose and how to minimize those negative impacts. And that is what this council really, that's the objective of this legislation. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over, and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I think we do share, share your goals. We differ on, you know, the right path to get there, but I think there's no question that we share the council's goals on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair?
Thank you, Speaker. So the city sells liens to a trust. In general, trusts are created to hold assets in order to provide additional protection, issue debts against them, and address tax liability issues. While the tax lien trusts do issue debt, they also take on the role of the final and most delicate stage of the city's tax enforcement process, which is foreclosure. So why does the city decide to create a trust each year rather than look to a public authority or a nonprofit entity similar to EDC or the Transitional Finance Authority to undertake this core city responsibility?
So the trust, the trust instrument is essentially one that is tied to the financing of the purchase of the liens. As you know, we issue, the trust issues bonds each year that typically have about a three-year term that are securitized by the pool of liens that are ultimately sold. And those are, each trust needs, each trust needs to be separate essentially in order to address, legally address that, the bond repayment.
Are there other areas where trusts have been created to undertake core city functions?
I don't know that there's anything quite parallel in other areas, but I don't know that I have an encyclopedic knowledge of all the...
So what authority?
Emmerich knows better than I do.
Where does the city's authority to create tax lien trusts come from?
Well, it's initially in state law, and then it's enacted in local law and the Administrative Code. The authority, the initial authority is in state law.
Have you, has, have any changes been made to the operations of the trust or its servicers? Or any other aspects on how tax liens are enforced after the liens are sold in your time?
After the liens are sold, in my time, in my time as Finance Commissioner?
Yeah.
No. We've only had one lien sale. I mean, yes, there were a lot of changes in the, in the whole process prior to the lien sale. And I, you know, I think we also recognize, thanks to your, thanks to the task force and thanks to conversations with you all, that there is a need for more intervention once the liens are sold for people who may be facing foreclosure. And that's where we want to, you know, work with you all on our proposals there to implement some safeguards there, more intervention to help homeowners avoid foreclosure in that period.
Okay, I want to get a little subterranean here. The trust hires a number of entities to do work on its behalf. This includes the servicers MTAG and Tower Capital, Wilmington Trust Company, RESF. I presume there are bond councils and other outside, other outside legal assistants. Can you describe the roles that each of these entities play? How are they chosen? How do they, how does the city oversee their work, and what are they paid?
So when the trust is created, the, the trust, which is us essentially, hires a trust manager, that's RESF. The trust manager in turn issues the debt, and it hires two servicers, firms to provide the servicers for the collection. The issuance of the bonds is essentially paid for by OMB's bond counsel already, the existing mechanism for selling bonds. So there's no additional cost there, except what's normal in the process. The contracts, which are now public on our website with the trust manager and the collector and the servicers, are, you know, they're, some of their duties and obligations are spelled out in law, some of them are spelled out in the contracts. But it's, you know, prescribed here exactly how they are supposed to proceed in the collection of debt. And, Annette, do you want to add anything about the servicers?
Yeah, the servicers have, in their, in their agreement, it tells them exactly what process they should take and how in collections, and it also details when, when they could act on foreclosure, which is based on the state law for foreclosure judicial process. It's very clear, and it is on our website, as to what they can and cannot do.
Are there tasks that city agency staff undertakes on behalf of the trust?
Not on behalf of the trust. I mean, we oversee the trust's function and the trust manager's contract and the operations of the trust manager and the servicers.
So I would presume that the trust is required to make a number of decisions as it carries out foreclosure proceedings. Could you tell us about some of the types of decisions that the, the trust has to make and how those decisions are made?
Okay, so the foreclosure process, as I said, follows the New York State law. So there is, there's about nine, eight to nine steps that they have to go through to get to the point of finally foreclosure on a property. Before foreclosure is actually, a pre-foreclosure notice is sent to the property owner. That's usually about after, about seven months if they haven't paid the interest or haven't paid anything on the lien. Then a complaint and notice is filed at the county clerk's office where the property is located. And the owner is personally served, as well as any interested parties, are provided legal notice of foreclosure. legal notice of complaint, giving them the opportunity to present a defense to the court. That's usually from the time the lien is sold, between 11 and 17 months. The court appoints a referee, which is the attorney, to certify the delinquent amount that's due. That's about 21 to 31 months after the lien. Takes, takes anywhere from 21 and 31 months for that process. The trust takes judgment against the property, that's usually about after 22 to 33 months. The court will issue a final judgment against the property and an action, auction scheduled by the referee. That's in the timeline, that's between 24 to 37 months. The auction is held on the county steps. The trust has the right to, but not the legal obligation, to bid in the delinquent tax amount due at the, at the auction. That happens between 26 to 42 months. The highest bidder has the right to take ownership of the property by paying the bid amount to the referee in exchange for the deed. Trust receives the proceeds and the lien is re-leased. So that whole process takes anywhere between four, up to 45, 48 months. All during that process, at any time, if the homeowner approaches the servicer and says, "I want to go on a payment plan," they have the right to do that. Up until the very last point before, um, the actual auction, they could still go on a payment plan. There's many times where property owners have gotten to the, to the service and say, "I want to go," and it's like days or minutes before the auction, and they will stop it and allow them to go on a payment plan. So they never lose their rights until that property actually gets auctioned. They have the right up until the auction to go on a payment plan or make any kind of resolution to, to pay, to pay and redeem their lien.
So how, how are the terms of the, go ahead?
Well, I, I just want to put a point on, on what Deputy Commissioner Hill just said. I mean, this, it's a state prescribed process, uh, state law prescribed process. It's in the court system. The steps are very detailed and elaborate, um, for foreclosure action. I think where the servicers make decisions is working with homeowners to try and get them, or property owners, to try and get them to a point of resolution. The contract, the, the compensation, the contracts to the servicer is actually structured to favor collection because they're, they're not, they don't recoup any of their foreclosure costs. So, you know, what, what they earn on, on a foreclosure is less than what they earn on a, on a standard collection. So they, you know, I mean, I think we've had cases where, uh, an owner has gone through five or six payment plans and defaults before, you know, getting to the point of finally resolving their debt. And the discretion, the exercise of discretion and decision-making on the servicers is to allow that. You know, they don't, I, I know there's an impression that it's a foreclosure machine, but it's not. I mean, it's a, it can end up in foreclosure, but the process is really designed and the servicers are incentivized to work with owners to resolve the debt rather than just foreclose.
I guess what we're trying to get, I appreciate that. I guess what we're trying to get at is understanding that each situation is, each case is different. How are the decisions, you know, who, when is a decision made to start, start a foreclosure process, to pause? Is there any, I want to understand if it's not arbitrary, how are those decision points made? What has to trigger in order for those decisions to happen?
I mean, I, I think what, what triggers the initiation of a foreclosure is when you have sought to work with a, an owner and they have not taken the steps necessary. If they come forward, as Deputy Commissioner Hill pointed out, you know, at any point they can come forward and make a payment, start a payment plan. I, I think our, uh, you know, what we, what we typically expect is that the servicers will work with people as much as possible to collect and avoid foreclosure, including through payment plans. I, uh, you know, if there's no indication that the homeowner or the property owner is willing to work or resolve their debt, then foreclosure can be initiated. And there are a lot of, many foreclosure actions that never end up in an auction, right? It's a percent, small percentage that actually end up in an auction. Many people, once they receive that notice, will come in and resolve the debt. So the fact that a foreclosure is initiated is in some ways, you know, a version of the lien selling the lien, uh, just later in the process. It's to sort of say, okay, well, now we're going to take the next step to get you to the point of working with us to resolve the debt. What we're proposing, sorry, let me, let me stop.
Yeah. Anecdotally, we've heard that, I guess we're trying to understand how the, for the payment plans, how those terms are decided, because anecdotally, we've heard they're not very flexible.
I mean, the, once you're, once the liens are sold, the payment plans offered by the servicers are not like the standard payment plans that we would offer prior to the sale of the liens. They are limited, they're shorter. I mean, I think you can go as zero down, but typically the term is about three years, 36 months.
Okay. I want to ask about Tower Capital Management. It's one of the servicers who collects debt on behalf of the trust. According to their website, a property owner is not allowed to enter into a payment agreement with the trust unless the owner can provide evidence that the property's current taxes are paid in full. So that means property owners are directed to prioritize new DOF and DEP charges before addressing tax liens that have been sold. These sold liens are the debts that put a property at immediate risk of foreclosure. So since the debt owed to the trust is what puts the property at foreclosure risk, should we be doing everything to get owners to pay that debt first before paying the new charges to DEP or DOF?
You know, this is, and I think honestly it took us a little while to quite understand the issue that you were bringing to our attention here before, but I, I think there is a gap, a gap in understanding, sometimes confusion, sometimes on, on owners. They get a bill from DOF quarterly or semi-annually, which doesn't mention that they owe money to the, to the trust, to the servicers for a sold lien. They get communications and billing from the lien servicer, who doesn't mention that you also, by the way, owe money to DOF. I think we are now looking at both of those noticing to improve those so that people are aware. And ultimately, it would be nice if there was a single system whereby you could sort of prioritize. I don't know if you've ever been involved in a technology product in the city, project in the city, but there, I don't know if we'll quite get there anytime soon. But, you know, I think the noticing, and I'll say also, the, the outreach is super important in helping people understand that point. And we do want to clarify for people, because I know that people come in and pay the bill and they don't understand actually which bill they've actually paid. So they pay their current charges and they think, why am I, why am I still in the lien sale? Or they'll pay the lien sale bill and they'll say, well, why am I now delinquent?
But...
On another, on my current charges.
But have we, have we identified why the prioritization is set that way? Because what we're hearing is the trust won't let you get into a payment plan until you're, you're paid off of those new bills.
Well, I think that's, that's fairly standard, uh, sale terms. I don't know if you have more insight into that, Deputy Commissioner, but no, no. I, we can get back to you. Yeah, we'll have to look at the, into that a little bit more.
I, we'd like to, we'd like to learn more about who made that determination. Was it the city? Was it the servicers, the trust administrator? Um, okay, I have a couple more that I want to give to my colleagues. A key feature of the tax lien trust is that they issue bonds backed by the expected revenues from the collection of those debts. This allows the city to get paid for some of the debts earlier than it would otherwise. So could you tell us the reasons why the city believes bonding is important in this process? Would it be possible to use the trust model without bonds?
So the original, the original concept here, when the lien sale model was first enacted in 1996, was to have this city-created but separate standalone entity that would have the ability to, uh, purchase the liens from the city. And then they owned the liens and they had, as I mentioned, all the rights to collection and all the risks associated with collection. The mechanism for that purchase was through the issuance of bonds so that, you know, sort of the expected value of the collections of those liens could be realized by the city upfront. I, I think what adds, what, what helps with the effectiveness of collection is the fact that those bonds have to be repaid. So the servicers, you know, are collecting debt, uh, and resolving debt with people in order to make sure that those bonds are covered. It's structured in a way that they're going to get covered, but, but I think that that's, was the basic thought behind the use of bonding as a mechanism here, was to provide upfront cash to the city and to ensure that then those collections, that, that upfront cash was realized.
But do you think the bonds impair the flexibility of the trust to provide more time or more options to pay?
I, I, I think it's, it's certainly possible to imagine, you know, a mechanism where we didn't have to use bonds, we had some other, but I'm not sure that it would be honestly as effective in collection, and I'm not sure that it would have the same sort of incentives and same benefit for the city that the current mechanism has.
Okay.
Ultimately, this is, this is, I'm hesitant to answer this question very definitively. I think there's a question for the Office of Management and Budget, honestly, about, you know, how the financing, what, what they, you know, see as the, the pros and cons, I guess, of an alternative to using bonds for financing.
Okay. Who are the purchasers of the bonds? How are they sold? Can anybody buy them?
We don't know all that much about the purchaser of bonds, but, you know, typically what you see in our capital program, for example, um, on our cash management, we have, most of the bonds are purchased by institutional investors, and they're looking for a certain sweet spot in terms of duration, in terms of interest rate. And so it's pension funds, insurance companies, mutual funds, you know, it's, it's largely institutional investors. Very few bonds of any type are actually purchased by individuals anymore. It's mostly through the, you know, mutual fund that, that buys bonds, for example, might include bonds of a three-year, two or three-year duration, uh, in their portfolio.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I want to move to one or a few questions for the DEP Commissioner. I want to echo what our speaker raised. I mean, we were mortified to see some of our capital projects singled out. Usually not used to DEP playing hardball like that. There's nowhere in any of these bills are we suggesting people not pay their water bills. And this is not personal, this is business, this is our job. To see capital projects in the neighborhoods of me and the sponsors of these bills was wild. I'm glad you cleared it up, that, that, that wasn't some sort of threat, but when we read it in the New York Post, that's certainly how it read to us. You weren't calling out projects in Staten Island or in Manhattan or wherever. You were calling out projects in our districts. And nowhere in any of these bills does it say, "People should stop paying their water bills." So we appreciate you giving us some clarity on that. But it was read as chin music and that's what we think it was. How much was the water systems rental payment requested by the city this year?
Actually, I, I believe it's 290. Correct me? I think it's 298, but it's in that ballpark.
Okay. And does the water system pay for this through raising the rate?
Uh, yes, as we, in part, we were clear about that, uh, in the, not this past year, but the previous year, uh, when the rental payment was first put in the budget, which the executive proposed and, and the council approved, um, we did explain to the water rate that a portion of the 2024 rate hike was directly attributable to the resumption of the water, the rental payment. And I think, Nerissa, did we outline something this year as well? In, in our breakdown of the water rate to the water board, how much was attributed to the, to the rental payment? Yeah? Did we? Well, that's, okay, but I can get back to, I'd have to look back at what we presented to the water board this past, this past May. I think we may have attributed a portion of the 3.7% to it as well.
So how much lower would the water rates be without the $300 million a year rental payment?
You know, it's, uh, you know, as I said, our, our revenues are about 4.75 billion. So at a simple mathematical equation, 290 over 4.5, of course, we do take, we, we have a formula for rate setting that takes into account our need to maintain, uh, cash on hand as part of our debt covenants. So it isn't quite a straight percentage, but the math is the math, 290 as a portion of 4.5 billion.
Do you, as Commissioner, agree with the rental payment system?
Uh, the rental payment dates back to the 1980s and the original establishment of the current structure of DEP and the Water Board and the Water Finance Authority. Under that structure, DEP has no role in determining whether the rental payment is requested. That's a decision made by the mayor and the budget director, and of course, the city council has to vote on the budget that includes the rental payment as revenue.
So you have no personal opinion if we should continue that?
I'm here in my official capacity, so I don't venture a personal opinion.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you, Chair. I also just want to express my disappointment with DEP, which I've said multiple times is one of my, is probably my favorite agency. We did see that as a threat and, you know, my district where we have business owners who are chronically losing inventory in their basements from flooding, public housing residents who have been displaced from flooded apartments, a district where an individual died in his basement after flooding. Holding these kinds of projects hostage while we're trying to prevent people from losing their homes over $10,000 is not okay. So I also just wanted to express that. I'm going to ask questions about intro 1490, 1419. This bill codifies a key recommendation from the task force to increase monitoring of tax liens that take more than three years to resolve after they've been sold, identify ways to address barriers for timely enforcement, and to take steps to ensure that these properties are not a problem for the surrounding community. For the public, we're talking about properties that are sitting around, they're often in litigation, which is a thing we talked about at length in the task force, but there are other reasons, and there's not a clear pathway for getting them out of this graveyard, the graveyard trust is what we call it. So how many properties are currently chronically unresolved at this point?
So there are about 2,900 properties altogether, part, separate parcels, there's more liens than that, but separate parcels that are in the graveyard trust, and 655 of them are in that unresolved, meet that unresolved threshold definition.
And on average, uh, what percentage of tax liens are you able to resolve within three years after the sale?
You know, after, after a certain period of time, all debt becomes much more difficult to collect. A lot of the properties that are in the, uh, that are in the graveyard trust that have been there for more than three years have a variety of reasons, including they're in some kind of protracted litigation or bankruptcy, their guardianship or probate, or, you know, murky ownership issues. There may be another foreclosure action going on. There may be, you know, an argument that there was a defective service of the notice. There are, there are lots of reasons. They may have no economic value. The trust may have made the bid and that was the winning bid. So there are, for many, many reasons why properties end up sitting there for a while.
Yeah. This was something we spent quite a bit of time on in the task force, is just trying to understand the categories of reasons. And so I think we agreed that this would be good to have regular reporting so we can delineate what are usable properties that we can get back into productive uses, specifically residential. Do you know, off the top of your head, how many of the chronically unresolved properties right now are residential or lots that could be developed for residential?
Hold, please.
head how many of the chronically unresolved properties right now are residential, or lots that could be developed for residential?
Hold, please. I mean, out of those 655, there's, well, first of all, there's about 199 that are classified as vacant land. So there might be
Right, and they could be the sliver.
Developable or undevelopable.
Yes, all of that. Yes, understood.
There are, how many, 67? 67 one-family homes. There are a number of others. We can get you this information.
Okay, yeah.
There are a number of other, you know, residential properties.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that data. I think part of what we're, the goal of what the council has tried to do through this process is to both understand, I mean, this stuff is really confusing. I think even in the task force meetings, oftentimes, we would, you know, you all would be asking yourself, like, oh, we have to go back and remember what we do and why we do it, and we were trying to learn at the same time. Stuff is very confusing, and I think having that regular reporting that delineates, that helps, helps provide opportunities for us to resolve these debts quickly and share the problem of figuring out how to make these productive properties, especially where it's residential. How can we turn them into housing, which we all agree that we need? Some of the stuff that came up with residential properties that aren't where people are living in them is that a lot of them had violations. So some of, another piece of what we were trying to do here was find solutions for making sure that agencies are paying attention to these places that have, that are unsafe for people to live in. And one of the things we're hoping that we can maybe agree on as we go through this negotiation process is amending the bill to require that the city do more, some type of regular inspection of these buildings where people are living, and wondering if you'd be amenable to that.
So broadly speaking, we certainly support the reporting requirements of this bill, and we are, support sharing the list of properties with the enforcement agencies, DOB, HPD, FDNY, et cetera. I mean, I think I have to defer to them, and I can let Deputy Commissioner Dargis speak to this if she wants, about just the resources question around that, but we are certainly willing to, you know, more than willing, more than happy to share, you know, bring these properties to the attention of our sister agencies. I don't know, Kim, do you want to?
I think I would need to discuss with my colleague that oversees the enforcement work. That's certainly a discussion that we can have, depending on the number of properties in question.
I mean, we have brought, I mean, I didn't bring any examples here, but we certainly can provide, but we talked at length about examples where having more collaboration and just better communication between the spreadsheets the DOF has and the violations that are on these buildings so that there's just more scrutiny and attention put on to buildings where tenants are living in unsafe properties. I think that, I mean, hopefully we can agree that that's an important thing to do, and hopefully you all will be amenable to that. I'm going to move on. Some of the chronically unresolved properties that have been foreclosed upon, and in those cases, the, some of the, some of these properties have been foreclosed upon, and in those cases, the trust actually won the foreclosure auction, but has not taken title to the property. Since the existing owner is about to lose the title, and the trust hasn't taken title, these properties are kind of effectively abandoned. How many chronically unresolved properties are those where the trust holds the winning foreclosure bid?
The trust has less than 1% of the, where they won the bid. I don't have the exact number of properties, but it is less than 1%. And generally, when they win the bid, they still go to they still do a sale action, where they go through the same process to try to get foreclosure action. And basically, what they do is they will put an offer for sale, and it's on the services website. They will decide the target recovery amount, and they will go through the wholesale process, and they've done that several, they will do that several times to try to recoup the tax that's due.
Okay, and what responsibility, just for the record, does the trust or city have to ensure these properties are maintained?
I'm sorry, say it again, to ensure? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
You couldn't hear me? I'm saying, sorry, I'll speak louder. What responsibility does the trust or city have to ensure that these properties are maintained where the the trust hasn't taken title but has the winning bid?
I mean, the city has a responsibility for enforcement for all properties, regardless of their ownership, whether it's the trust or a private owner, or, you know, all of them are subject to enforcement by the city. I just want to note also, in the event there is auction sale, anything, anything that's realized over what is due for the tax liens goes to the owner.
I just think it would be very, very important moving forward for stronger collaboration where there are recurring violations. I mean, most of these buildings are in some form of disarray because of what's going on with the owner and DOF advocating, or in the report showing that there is some regular, somebody's regularly popping in, knowing that these violations are open, I think would be really helpful.
Yep, we're fully in support of this bill. We're happy to work with you on that.
Great. I want to move into a couple of questions about property disposition. When a property is foreclosed upon, the court overseeing the foreclosure will hold an auction to sell a property. Our understanding is that the trust always places a bid in each auction equal to the debts owed, thereby setting a reserve price. If there is no higher bid, the trust wins the bid, but instead of taking title to the property, it re-markets the bid. This re-marketing appears to be done via a second auction. However, instead of being overseen by the courts, it appears that according to at least Tower Capital Management, bids are subject to review and approval by a committee that evaluates all bids. Can you say who is on the committee?
So your characterization is correct, and the committee consists of designated employees of the servicer.
Of the servicer, and do you know how many employees that is?
I didn't, I don't have that information.
I don't have the exact number.
Yeah, but we can get back to you with that.
And that, that kind of structure, though, is outlined in the contracts that go out, right, in the, in the RFPs, and so the servicer would have to be having this committee, so that would be something that would be in the contract?
Yes.
Okay. It would be helpful to know how many people are on that. Do you all have with you, or can you speak to the criteria that they use to evaluate the bids?
I don't, I don't necessarily have the criteria. I know one of the criteria, they do, they do, they do an appraisal to see the value of the property, so they could determine what the target recovery rate could be. I don't have all the criterias, because the servicer will list out the criteria, which has to be approved by the committee.
So mostly, these are about just strictly recovering some of the debt? Is there anything beyond that in terms of community needs or some of the larger city goals in terms of housing?
I mean, you know, this is, this is, this process now is about tax enforcement, and it's, it's not, so there is not a focus on those issues that you all have raised. And as I said earlier, I think we're more than happy to continue to work with you all to try to take this segment of properties here that you're talking about and find, and where it's appropriate, find a pathway that can return them to productive use.
Okay, so we just appreciate more information on the committee and the criteria that they're being asked to develop. Is that the criteria that you all have asked them to develop, or they come up with that criteria?
They come up with the criteria.
They come up with the criteria. Okay, so I think this is our point, is that, you know, you know, you all are focused, as you're supposed to be, on collecting revenue. We appreciate that, we understand that. We've never, in any of our conversations, talked about not doing that. I think what we're looking at is trying to find a way to balance that out, and to have some other criteria other than just like squeezing the dollars back out.
Understood.
We have a, I just wanted to kind of illustrate a point. I have a, there is a property that Tower Capital has on the website. One of them is in my district. It's a vacant lot. It's directly next to the line that the IBX is going to go on. The asking price is 1.9 million. It looks like, from my understanding, the trust, or the city, is the highest bidder and can take title, but has not done so yet. And so I think one of the things we're trying to get at here is that bringing more attention to this through a different entity that is literally mission-oriented on trying to take underutilized, abandoned, nonproductive land and put it back into use to the community's benefit, to New Yorkers' benefit. And so one of the questions I have is, what is the city doing for this and other properties like this? When do you decide to take title or not take title?
I just want to say, you said an entity that's mission-driven, and I think this is important, because I don't, I think we need to have distinct missions enforcement, which is what DOF does, and taking properties that are distressed, abandoned, in trouble, and returning them to productive use, and making sure, for example, that a vacant lot that could be utilized for something else is made available for that purpose. We have to think through, I think, carefully, where the, you know, at what point we decide, okay, that piece of property, we're not going to sell the lien on, or we're not going to foreclose on, we're going to find another route.
Right. That's, that's, that's what we're trying to do here, and we don't have criteria that we know of to, for how those servicers make those determinations. Those servicers are not, you know, that's not their job, right, based on the contract and from what we're gathering. These are finance people, or some guy, or a couple of people who are making pretty consequential decisions for neighborhoods and individuals. And so I think, I understand your point, the point being made about enforcement and mission, and the mission being New York and preserving New York City and helping New Yorkers. I think we're just trying to find a balance here.
And let me, I should let Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner Dargis speak also about sort of HPD's programs and efforts here.
So I think you're, and this is, you know, a very good question that you've raised, and I think highlighted maybe an area where there could be more collaboration between the agencies. As you know, we work very closely with Neighborhood Restore. They do function as an interim owner for many programs that HPD supports in order to take property that's unstable today and to stabilize it, or to work with others to do so. I think there may be, we need to talk about this more with city council as well, between the agencies, but I think there's an opportunity to think about how, whether there's a way to get Neighborhood Restore information about those properties, so they can evaluate whether there's a potential housing opportunity, specifically affordable housing opportunity. You know, Neighborhood Restore has pretty extensive experience in other similar programs. For example, they oversee our Community Restoration Fund, which is basically the purchase of delinquent FHA debt, working with the homeowners, and if it gets to foreclosure, working on a stabilization outcome for that property. So I think there may be some strategic opportunities there that we could think through together, and I certainly would have to have a conversation with Neighborhood Restore as well.
Okay. One of the properties that we had flagged for the administration actually was a six-unit residential property in the Rockaways that had been stuck in the lien sale trust for 10 years. In that time, the debt has ballooned beyond the value of the property, and now has 300 open BNC violations. So this is why we're talking about the need for the reporting, the need for more eyes and attention on it, why we need the DOF, and I guess its servicers to be flagging these types of things, and more coordination, which could have been done at any point. I mean, this conversation is happening because we're forcing it. There's nothing stopping the administration before from doing a deeper dive, cleaning the data, looking at all the chronically unresolved liens, and giving it extra attention. I just have a couple more questions, and then I'll yield. No, I'm going to yield, and I'll come back. Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. I'm certainly going to ask about 578, but I guess I'm a little confused. When you say conflict of interest, I guess between the affordable housing perhaps, and the collection of debt. I mean, in my world, at least the nonprofit community has money. I wish we had a $1.9 million property in Manhattan, for God's sake. We'd buy it in a minute. I got $10 million property, it's a $100 million property. But they do purchase that all the time. So I don't know why it would be, it wouldn't be something that as an administration, this is why we're talking about lien bank, land bank, et cetera, is to try to accomplish that. That's why I don't understand why it's a conflict of interest. You would still get your money, which I understand, and at the same time, provide whatever the, I mean, some of these smaller buildings to be DV homes would be phenomenal. We are absolutely out of domestic violence locations, as an example. So I'm confused. Can somebody just help me understand why that's a conflict, to have both collection of the funding and a good use?
I mean, I just, I want to sort of take it to the, to the discussion about foreclosure here. There's to illustrate, I think, the crux of the point. If there's a property that is valuable in terms of redevelopment, right, then the incentive would be to foreclose on that property in order to take it, right, and redevelop it. If there's a property that's not that valuable, that may be inhabited by somebody who's having trouble maintaining their property, excuse me, and paying their taxes, but it's not, not good for redevelopment, the incentive will be to foreclose for purposes of tax enforcement. So I think, you know, my concern is that we were combining in one entity mixed interests, mixed objectives that will lead to outcomes that are fundamentally unfair.
Okay, I mean, I guess we somewhat disagree on that, because I do think that this suggestion that has come to this council could accomplish all the goals that we're all trying to seek. So that's where the problem is.
I mean, I think, my view on this is that we can accomplish these objectives. We have to define systematically and carefully the situations in which we want to intervene in order to take a property from its owner in order to use it as, for a community benefit, and that that has to be, you know, carefully described and circumscribed and separate from the enforcement effort, so that we don't have kind of inequitable, unfair outcomes all when the same entity is charged with both enforcement and development.
All right. I know we've all been talking about this land bank lien bank, but there is $40 million in funding in this here state budget for this land bank statewide. Is that something, I know that you're not supportive of this concept, but if, did the city, if we were to do this land bank, would the city have the ability to apply for the funds that are available currently, and wouldn't it make sense to have a land bank to unlock some of these funds?
I would have to defer to the Office of Management and Budget on that.
Okay. From this council's perspective, state law authorizes land banks, it's pretty clear that they can be used to purchase tax liens from localities and be used for tax enforcement efforts. Is there any legal reason, although you may not support it personally, that leads you to believe that a land bank could not be used to take over tax liens enforcement for the city?
No, I mean, there's no legal reason they could do it. I just don't believe that that's the intent and design, as I read the legislative intent of Article 16.
Okay. This land bank lien bank that we've been talking about creates a board with nine directors, three from the Merrill, and three from the Speaker, and three would be jointly mayor and Speaker. Further, one of the joint appointee could be the executive director of such a bank. Even though you have expressed your concerns, do you have any concerns with the makeup of such a board that I think would provide more transparency to government?
I am not convinced, Councilmember, that a board, an appointed board necessarily provides any more accountability than bringing me up here to answer for my actions. provides any more accountability than bringing me up here to answer for my actions in a hearing. I don't necessarily believe that that creates extra accountability, or a greater degree of accountability. In fact, I think it could actually insulate it from accountability. I also think that a board, that it has a mixed membership like that, where its role is to make decisions on certain actions, again, risks, risk-making decisions that are influenced by considerations that are mixed, inequitable, and other than, you know, a clear, mission-driven purpose that a land bank that was only focused on development would have.
Okay. Can you describe, you have a little bit, the transparency requirements that the trust currently is required to meet? I know you mentioned the three people who are the actual directors, and there's a staff. How does it work in terms of transparency? Is there a hearing? Are there regular reports, et cetera? How is that communicated to the public?
Yeah. There was, during the lien sale, there's lots of reporting that goes on. We have several reports that we do give to the City Council. At the end of the sale, we also give a report for the 90, the 60, at each interval, there's reports that go out, that share with the City Council the properties that are on, at risk. At the end of the sale, we, there's reporting that also goes out as the results of the sale. We give you, we also have, the tax, the servicers have quarterly reports that they have to send in, that also tells them their, what they have redeemed, how much, what's left, and what process, and where they are in the redemption process.
How about when the meetings are taking place to decide the process? What I would consider open meeting laws? How would, is that something that's part of the trust? Open meeting laws, deliberation, video opportunities, et cetera? That kind of, that's what I'm more talking about? Or a hearing at the end to say, this is why we did what we did?
I mean, as structured, there's no requirement for that under open meeting laws. And I don't think that they're really, it doesn't operate in that fashion.
Okay. Well, that's the kind of thing that a lien land bank would do, and the kind of thing that, I guess, as somebody who's spent my whole life trying to get government to be more available to the public, I would consider. I also, I just want to thank you for your support of 1411. I think we all agree with that, and that's something that is clearly needed for the Board of the Building to know what's going on. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Nurse, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. We're going to let you guys go early for good behavior.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Okay, I am now going to open the floor for public testimony. Before we begin, I have to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public must remain silent unless, of course, they're testifying. The witness table is reserved for those people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Furthermore, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but they may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, just make sure you fill out one of those little appearance cards in the back, the Sergeant-at-Arms, and just wait for your name to be called. Once you've been recognized, you'll have two minutes to speak on today's hearing, which is the lien sale and the land bank. If you have a written statement or any additional written testimony that you want to submit for the record, just provide a copy to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You can also email written testimony within 72 hours of the conclusion of this hearing to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Audio/video recordings are not accepted. So, our first panel, we're going to start with the representative from Borough President Reynoso's office, Lacey Talber.
All right. Okay.
Okay, good begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Brennan. Thank you for holding this hearing today. I'm here representing Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso, who has been working alongside advocates to reform and replace the tax lien sales since he was a member of the City Council. Several issues led the City Council to allow the lien sale to expire in 2022. Most importantly, the fact that this Giuliani-era policy to transfer debt to private purchasers disproportionately impacted communities of color throughout the city. Multiple studies showed that over many years, the Department of Finance was up to nine times more likely to sell a tax lien in a black neighborhood than a white neighborhood. Additionally, most residential properties in the previous four lien sales were rental buildings located in Black and Latino communities, putting their tenants at risk of displacement. In the lien sale, as we discussed, the tax lien trust contracts with private servicing companies, and these companies often charge up to 18% interest. To avoid foreclosure, some property owners take out predatory private loans, or sell their buildings to speculators for less than market value, or the trust can foreclose, the property owner can lose their home. Tenants have no say in who becomes their new landlord, and the city gives up its leverage to use tax debt to get landlords to pay their delinquent taxes and improve building conditions. The changes that the council implemented to the lien sale this year were a step in the right direction. Unfortunately, their reforms didn't go far enough. According to DOF data, the agency sold more than 4,500 liens this year, more than in previous years, and it's particularly concerning that the neighborhoods with the most liens sold remain low-income communities of color. The four zip codes with the most liens sold are all in Brooklyn, East New York, Bushwick, Cypress Hills, Canarsie, and East Flatbush. It is clear that the lien sale, as it is, needs to end. Accordingly, Borough President Reynoso thanks the council for proposing the legislation on today's agenda. I won't review everything it does, but just to say that he supports. And as we move into a new administration, that places a high priority on affordability. These policies will help us in our efforts to keep homeowners and tenants in their communities in homes they can afford. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we have Salvatore DiAngelo, DiAngelo, I'm sorry, I can't read it. Clint Okatama, Jean-Andre Sassin, and Jacob Schneider.
Do you have more copies, or just the only one?
Okay, you want to begin? Go ahead, just say your name, or you could start.
Sure. Salvatore DeVola. Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Salvatore DeVola. I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Restore Housing Development Fund Corporation. I'd like to thank Chairperson Brennan and members of the City Council Finance Committee for allowing me to testify today. Neighborhood Restore and its affiliate nonprofit entities work closely with the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development on developing housing programs that seek to transition physically and financially distressed properties into affordable community assets. Since 1999, Neighborhood Restore successfully created and preserved 13,000 units of affordable housing in over 2,300 properties throughout New York City. As the interim owner and steward of properties earmarked for revitalization, Neighborhood Restore has vast experience with the challenges and concerns that the proposed land bank seeks to address. The types of properties and methods of acquisition, management, stabilization, and disposition vary from program to program, but the goal is the same: to preserve and create affordable housing opportunities that benefit New York City and its residents. Neighborhood Restore has the unique experience of administering a myriad of programs that seek to address the needs of a variety of property types and circumstances that range from vacant land to zombie homes to multifamily occupied buildings. Created at the behest of HPD, with the support of local initiative support corporation Enterprise Community Partners, Neighborhood Restore administers a third-party transfer program, an anti-abandonment program that transfers tax delinquent properties from neglectful landlords to responsible new owners. By working closely with HPD, locally elected officials, and community-based nonprofits and MWBE partners, Neighborhood Restore ensures the maintenance of safe, affordable housing for its residents and oversees the stabilization, management, rehabilitation, planning of these distressed properties to preserve and create affordable housing opportunities for low-income New Yorkers. Our experience with TPT has enabled us to acquire privately-owned properties, transitioning from scattered-site emergency shelters into permanent housing for formerly homeless families. Over the past 25 years, the city has continued to rely on Neighborhood Restore's expertise and assistance in addressing housing and neighborhood stabilization issues. Most recently, that experience is, oh, two minutes.
You could finish.
I could finish, thank you. Experiences through the acquisition and stabilization of properties earmarked for intervention by the city, activities most akin to those of a land bank. At the height of the financial crisis in 2008, Neighborhood Restore began acquiring one-to-three-family bank-owned homes, leveraging federal, city, state subsidies to secure private financing for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and sale of over 250 homes to first-time homebuyers. By focusing its efforts on neighborhoods that were hardest hit by the crisis, Neighborhood Restore was able to address the destabilizing effects of foreclosure and provide affordable homeownership opportunities to low- and moderate-income New Yorkers. That work continues today with Neighborhood Restore redeveloping vacant, nitrogen-owned, single-family properties into affordable homes, and converting city-owned apartment buildings into affordable cooperatives for its existing residents and first-time low-income buyers. I'll just skip the next paragraph, but essentially highlights during Superstorm Sandy, we took title to properties that were substantially damaged by the hurricane, acquiring those properties, and holding them, giving the city and our community partners the ability and the need to actually figure out what to do with those properties in the future. Next, it is my understanding that the main objective of Intro 578 and its companion bills is to provide an alternative path for the sale of the city tax liens. By shifting the sale of tax liens from a specialized trust to a land bank, the argument is that most, that more thoughtful and measured efforts can be implemented to focus on property owners' needs rather than just collecting debt. These concerns are valid, and any efforts to assist homeowners, especially owner occupants of one-to-three-family homes, are laudable and deserve focus and attention. I wonder, however, if the creation of a new entity, a land bank, is the right approach for addressing the larger issues facing housing preservation in New York City today. Can guardrails be instituted into the existing process that achieve the goals of protecting homeowners whose tax liens are sold? My read of Intro 1407 seems to do just that: legislating limitations on the collection of debts for owner-occupied one-to-three-family homes. Can there be other legislative efforts that seek to exempt certain classes of properties from the lien sale, or that increase the dollar amount in years of delinquency for inclusion in a lien sale? Can our experienced network of housers be further tapped to reform existing structures to meet the goals of the proposed legislation? Our experience with the Community Restoration Fund program exemplifies a strategy that leans on the strengths of our community and government partners to address emerging housing challenges, in this instance, mortgage delinquency and distress. By acquiring distressed, single-family mortgage notes, CRF's primary goal has been to keep families in their homes through multi-pronged counseling efforts that often lead to positive loss mitigation outcomes. The City Council has supported our efforts by providing discretionary funding for this program. Neighborhood Restore and its established network of community-based partners have routinely been asked to assist the city with fulfilling its goals of developing and preserving affordable housing. Acquiring land and buildings for a public purpose has been our core mission. As a steward of distressed properties, Neighborhood Restore has provided the stability and experience necessary to implement neighborhood strategies that foster housing preservation outcomes that include opportunities for collaboration with our nonprofit, MWBE, HDFC, and Community Land Trust partners. Given today's affordable housing preservation challenges, our focus needs to be on our shared goals and outcomes, and not a new legal structure. For these reasons, we do not believe a land bank in New York City is necessary at this time. I thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just, just saying on one thing, Salvatore, considering that Neighborhood Restore's experience with TPT, would your organization be interested in taking over tax enforcement on behalf of a lien trust?
I haven't thought about that. That's not really something that...
I am in no position to offer this, but I'm just...
You know, as an organization, we're a 30-year-old, 30-year-old organization, we've worked very closely with the city and HPD on programs. It's, you know, I'm always happy to have a conversation about work that assists the city of New York.
Thank you. Go ahead. Just say your name, and then you could start.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Jacob Schneider, and I am the Senior Program Manager for Research and Policy at the East New York Community Land Trust. So, thank you, Chair Brennan, and members of the committee still here. Anyway, so, East New York CLT works to prevent displacement in real estate speculation in the neighborhoods of East New York and Brownsville. We are also a founding member of the Abolish the New York City Tax Lien Sale Coalition, and have been fighting for the past five years to end the predatory lien sale and replace it with a just and equitable system of debt collection. We are excited and pleased that bills have been introduced that would abolish the current lien sale system and replace it with a publicly accountable land bank. East New York has been ground zero in Brooklyn in terms of the number of liens sold and residential units affected by the lien sale for years. Yet, what is equally, or perhaps more problematic, is the ineffectiveness of the lien sale as an enforcement mechanism, contrary to what DEP and DOF were talking about today. And so let me illustrate this with an example. There is a six-unit rental property on Glenmore Avenue in East New York. It has been owned by no less than five LLCs since 2014. The last time a tax payment was made was April 2014. It has been eligible for the lien sale every year one has occurred since 2015, yet a lien has never been sold on the property. Instead, over the past decade, the debt has ballooned to more than $550,000, which is almost equal to its estimated market value of $580,000. Currently, the building has 287 open hazardous or immediately hazardous HPD violations, which is just under 50 violations per unit. The slumlords that have owned the building appear to face no real consequences for their failure to pay their debt, or provide a safe, decent home for their tenants. This building is not an anomaly. As we understand it, of the 30,000 properties eligible for this year's lien sale, 4,500 had liens sold on them, and about 13,000 property owners either paid, entered a payment plan, or were removed through easy exit or exemptions. This leaves about 12,500 properties without a clear explanation of why, like the Glenmore Avenue building, they were not sold in the sale. So this begs the question: if the lien sale is an effective debt collection mechanism, as the Department of Finance and DEP have argued for years, why do we see properties like the Glenmore Avenue building? I think the answer is actually quite simple. The city's lien sale does not operate in the interest of New Yorkers, because it is accountable to the interest of investors. The primary concern of the city's lien sale process is engineering financial products that ratings agencies will stamp as safe investments. Properties like the Glenmore building are not included in the sale, because they would taint the credit quality of the pool of liens in that year's trust. This means that the city's current lien sale model can never be reformed. It can never be made to work in the interest of New Yorkers. The tax lien sale must be abolished and replaced. So we fully support Intro's 1407 and 1420, which are critical to ending the city's opaque and ineffective tax lien sale. A land bank is central to a just and equitable replacement system, and we support Intro 578, but we would like to see some changes. The bill should require that 100% of the units in a project will be affordable, to be automatically eligible to get land bank properties without additional public review. The definition of affordability should be in line with the neighborhood where the property is located. We want affordability to be defined as affordable to the median income of the community board a property is located in, or 60% of AMI, whichever is lower. CLTs must have a first right of refusal for any land bank dispositions, because they provide a permanent affordability and efficient use of subsidies that very few other nonprofit housing providers can do. We also would like to see affordable commercial space added to the list of uses that won't require public review for disposition. Finally, we support Intro 1419, which addresses chronically unresolved tax liens, but the bill should be amended to affirmatively require HPD, the Department of Buildings, and the Fire Department to inspect all properties with chronically unresolved liens. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Greetings. My name is Jean-Andre Sassin. I'm a member of New York Communities for Change. I'm also a resident of Queens Village, and therefore Southeast Queens, a prime target for the predatory acts of the tax lien sale. In light of these proposals, please forgive me if you've heard these valid points before. Though I'm excited about the progress our coalition and the people's allies and the councils have made with the promising sunset of the tax lien sale, I know this many-year fight won't be over without more bills like these, 1407, 578, and 1420, and the city's commitment to keeping our neighborhoods intact and our vulnerable neighbors in place. Using physical inspections of properties in distress would help in doing this. Our communities should not be up for auction, certainly not by for-profit players, at any rate. We believe the land banks and nonprofits would serve the needs and spirit of community better. Changing AMI... Our communities should not be up for auction, certainly not by for-profit players, at any rate. We believe the land banks and nonprofits would serve the needs and spirit of community better. Changing AMI to at least 80% to local zip code incomes will automatically increase the affordability of any new developments. 100% affordability units in a property to avoid review for that development. Increasing affordability in development does not mean, have to mean, displacing the residents who call it home. Including affordable commercial space will allow the continued presence of the mom-and-pop shops that made that neighborhood attractive in the first place for development. Thank you. I'd like to use just a bit of my remaining time to address the tension between compassion and accountability that DEP Chairman stated, and how disingenuous it was for him to say that, as their delinquent mailings to people looking for payment start out with, "Most people pay their bills on time," which therefore sets the tone of what he believes compassion is. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Clint Okuyama. I'm a member of Western Queens Community Land Trust and a resident of Astoria. I'm also an affordable housing provider to elder veterans and other housing insecure individuals in the Bronx. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in support of Intro 1407, Intro 1420, and Intro 578, which will end the tax lien sale as we know it and facilitate a land bank for NYC that can handle tax liens and municipal debt. We are thrilled to see that all of you are moving to permanently sunset the tax lien sale and share our same values and missions. Reform of the tax lien sale and the creation of a land bank will yield strong financial benefit to the city. Land banks and community land trusts have created stable, valuable, and permanently affordable housing, which will significantly ease the city's housing affordability crisis. Many studies have shown that housing affordability is strongly correlated with homelessness rates. Controller Brad Landers' analysis found that each individual who experiences homelessness can cost the city from $2,000 to over $108,000 over a 30-day period due to shelter or hospitalization costs. Reforming the tax lien sale in a way that empowers households with stability and permanent affordability will not only reduce the prevalence of these costs, but will allow long-term residents of New York to remain in their homes and neighborhoods. By including renewable 99-year leases with community land trusts, these effects can be made permanent. Furthermore, the city will be able to collect taxes on these fully functional properties. Many of the households affected by the tax lien sale are minorities due to centuries of discriminatory practices such as redlining. My home borough of Queens is defined by a widely global ethnic population that includes many immigrant families. In these particular times, I'd like to ask, what is the role of this city's government? In Article 17, Section 1 of our state constitution, the government is tasked with providing for those in need, and rulings such as Callahan clearly state that New York City's duty is to provide shelter for all, including immigrant families. Abolishing the lien sale and replacing it with a land bank that creates affordable housing will protect vulnerable households and financially empower a city. And I'd also just like to thank you all for your work. I know that we're all aligned in our goals, so thank you.
Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you. For Salvatore, I have great respect for the work that you've been doing. My question is, why is it not compatible for the lien bank and New York Restore to work together? Because obviously, there are buildings, in addition to the ones that you're talking about, others have mentioned, Councilmember Nurse mentioned, that are still in limbo. Those will be the kind of buildings that I think you could work on to make them productive for the future. Why is there no, why is it not compatible?
I think, in my opinion, I think that there are existing ways to address the needs and the outcomes that everyone is talking about. I'm not, you know, I think that, you know, and what the administration was talking about a little while ago, you know, there's this distinction between a tax collector and sort of an advocate for, you know, the communities and the housing that's out there. I just feel like creating a new structure isn't necessarily going to solve the problem. I think that we, there are probably ways to work within the structure that exists and sort of tweak those things to sort of get the outcomes that we're all looking to get.
I hear you. I think we somewhat disagree in the sense that it hasn't happened yet, and there are quite a few properties that are sitting in limbo, and the need for affordable housing or something similar is extreme. But thank you very much for your response.
Thank you all very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have testimony from Jaclyn Griffin, Paula Segal, Joan Erskine, and Ariel Hirsch.
You got it, buddy.
Thank you.
You want to begin?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jaclyn Griffin. I'm a senior staff attorney in the Neighborhood Economic Justice Project in the Brooklyn Office of Legal Services NYC. We have been working on these issues for a number of years. I've been at Legal Services now for 15 years. We have worked with council and its staff, and with the Department of Finance, and with the Department of Environmental Protection on many different types of protective legislation. And it, you know, it remains to be seen whether or not a land bank is the answer to many of the problems that we've been seeing, but I just want to reiterate that what happens before a lien is sold is just as important as what happens after it is sold. We worked really hard, and when I say "we," I do mean "we." It was council, it was DEP, it was DOF, and advocates. We worked really hard on the Property Tax Interest and Deferral Program, which is really a groundbreaking program that allows people to pay according to their income, and that has continued to suffer from low enrollment for the six or seven years that it's been around. We also worked really hard on protecting heirs of decedent homeowners who would like to enter into installment agreements on the same terms as a homeowner would be permitted to, and by and large, those heirs have not been able to access those protections. In the same way with the easy exit, there were a ton of problems with easy exit this year. I'm sure it's not surprising to council to hear that we've reported back on that. The Coalition for Affordable Homes has written a letter to the council about that. But the thing is, is that we have these protections on the books, and they need to continue to operate functionally. And DOF and DEP, as they stated here today, their primary function is to collect revenue. The DEP Commissioner said threats work, and so, I do not think it is a workable solution to have them continue to be in charge of the protective programs because they narrowly construe them, limiting their applicability and limiting, effectively writing them out of the law. And I think we've worked too hard on these reforms to just sort of let them fall by the wayside, and, you know, a land bank is good, but I don't think it solves all the problems because what happens before is just as important as what happens after, and the options narrow for very vulnerable people. I'm talking about people who are victims of deed theft. I'm talking about heirs who are sort of lost in the estates process. These are the folks that we see coming into our office and that we're committed to assisting. I do want to end with a story because I think stories are important. Earlier this year, our office sued the Department of Environmental Protection over their shut-off program, which is just for single-family homes. One of the plaintiffs, my client, is a healthcare worker at a cancer hospital in New York City. She is, she was home for an extended period because she was suffering from heart failure. She was caring in her home for her adult son, who was also suffering from heart failure, and DEP threatened to shut off her water, which they both definitely needed to survive. And after she begged and borrowed from friends to come up with a 10% down payment, she was slightly short, and they, again, continued the threat to shut off her water until our office intervened. Nothing that we're talking about here today protects that person, and so, if we have a person in that situation that is threatened in the way that she was threatened, that system is unjust, and it should not be allowed to happen. I'll conclude my remarks there and rely on what I've written.
Thank you very much. Paula.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your collaboration over most of the last decade on trying to untangle the system we've been hearing about. One of the things that really struck me in the administration's testimony an hour ago was the Department of Finance Commissioner saying that the reason the current lien sale system works is because the tax lien trust is more accountable to the investors and the bond purchasers than to New Yorkers. That is a cudgel. We are, I am so glad to be sitting here today with this committee, with this council, with the bravery that you all have to turn that around, right? We need a city that is more accountable to New Yorkers than it is to bond purchasers. End of story. In my written testimony, I talk about a number of things. I want to highlight two bits. One is a footnote, but I think it's very, very important. As my colleague pointed out, the easy exit program, which we all worked on last year and we had a lot of hope for, and we thought, okay, maybe we'll just, we'll give people some time, right? We'll give, we'll give folks a mechanism to say, "I just need some time to figure things out." We'll leave the system as is, but we'll let, we'll let individual property owners pause it for themselves. Department of Finance only approved 410 easy exit applications this year. That's out of a 90-day list that had about 30,000 properties on it and a final sale list that had 4,500. That, that piece that was supposed to be the revolutionary piece for people, were low-income property owners who lived in their properties, which is already a very small share of people, had a chance to really just give themselves a breathing space. Department of Finance turned them down overwhelmingly. We don't know how many people applied, but we do know that only 410 applications are approved. That's really important. The story that I tell in my written testimony, I'm not going to go through in detail, but I, it is the story of a preservation of a community garden that I had been working on as long as Emery and I have been working on this issue together because it was one of the ways that I realized just how broken this system is. It's a garden that the Parks Department has been trying to preserve. I think we'll get there. It is going to end up costing the city, I can't even do the math, what it will end up costing in the end, but it will end up costing about a million dollars more than it would have cost if all they needed to do was do the infrastructure upgrades to help the community have a safe sidewalk, have water in their community garden, and potentially actually purchase the property. But instead, liens were sold on the two parcels, and there's a windfall coming to the tax lien trust in the form of what they're getting for a defected lien, and in the form of what their servicers are getting after a foreclosure, and there's a windfall coming to an investor who took a gamble in an auction room and bought a vacant lot site on scene, and now he's negotiating with D-CAS for a purchase price. So, that's the system we have. It's a story I can tell with a lot of detail because it's nobody's home, right? And it's a story that's very important to people, but that's, those same things happen to homes and happen to families, and they're incredibly hard to untangle. There's an absurd lack of transparency. What we know is that the city actually doesn't run the sale itself. It relies on a private company, which we didn't hear about today at all, but there's a private company called RESF Finance. They used to be called La Perk. They're the ones that decide what goes in the sale because they're the ones that put together the bond offering. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for letting me just respond.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joan Erskine. I'm here on behalf of myself and Brooklyn Level Up, which represents the flats, Flatbush, East Flatbush, and the Flatlands. Seven years ago, I bought a brick row house with a driveway, front porch, garden, and backyard in East Flatbush. I love it, and I love my neighbors. Most of them are from the Caribbean, and they have been there for decades, and from whom I have picked up quite a few gardening tips. But even in that short time, I've seen my neighborhood change. As my neighbors have aged and died, too often their houses, their families' intergenerational wealth is stolen because with aging and death frequently comes financial hardship and neglect that results in property tax delinquency. Through my work with Brooklyn Level Up, I've come to understand that this is the case throughout the flats. Under the current tax lien sale structure, those homeowners or their heirs are exposed to bad actors and pressure to sell their homes for rock-bottom prices to avoid further debt, and when they do, the buyer developers put up condos, and I'm going to use a technical term here. These are ugly-ass condos. And these condos sacrifice every square foot to concrete and profit. These developments overburden existing electrical, gas, sewage, and transportation infrastructure, and they are, they're more expensive than can be paid for the people in my neighborhood. They are not priced for the residents of East Flatbush either to buy or to rent. Now, clearly, taxes need to be collected. The bills under consideration today attend to that, but they also strive to keep the properties in a range that is affordable to the people who live there. These bills replace a profit-driven system with one that prioritizes affordable housing and community land use. This switch is essential if we are to preserve a livable city. So now, to some specifics. One, 80% AMI is not affordable housing in East Flatbush. According to the HPD, 80% AMI for a family of four is roughly $130,000. Less than 25% of East Flatbush families make that. The AMI needs to be set, needs to set prices, has to be related to the actual average and median income of the area. The bill must require that all units and projects be affordable for that project to get land bank properties without additional public review. The proposed one-unit minimum to qualify is entirely inadequate. Neighborhoods need neighborhood businesses. Let affordable commercial space be allowed without public review of specific, of the specific deal. And finally, because community land trusts by their nature function to preserve affordable housing, they should have a right of first refusal over any other entities bidding on properties in the land trust. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. My name is Ariel Hirsch. I'm the Director of Policy and New Projects at UHAB. We're a 50-year-old nonprofit specifically dedicated to preserving and helping tenants take over their homes and maintain it as permanently affordable cooperative HDFC housing. We also have developed hundreds of units of affordable housing, mostly through the third-party transfer program. Tax lien sale is a little far afield from our work, but these things are deeply interconnected, and so felt that it was important to be here to speak specifically about the proposals for a land bank, lien bank. We agree with the sort of intent around these proposals. The system is not working. It needs to be reformed. However, we've worked as a partner with Neighborhood Restore for many, many years, over 20 now, and find them to be very capable and essential and really skilled and knowledgeable partners. I'll, you know, spoke a little bit about the work, but really would want to simply encourage the council to think really specifically about the structures that we already have that may be leveraged to do the things that we wish to see happen and to focus on getting us closer towards those outcomes rather than focusing on the specific legal categories or sort of containers that may be preferable or ideal here. We have a lot of experience and knowledge and understanding already under our belts, and it would be a shame to not use that to its full effect. The last two points that I'll make very quickly is around, this question around affordability. In preference, we are in coalition with many of the advocates here and work closely together. We'll say that the other piece to encouraging deeper affordability is not only on the legislative side, but also programming and financing from the agency and is really worth considering here. And while we are a nonprofit, we're a founding member of Innerborough CLT. We feel, you know, believe deeply in the power of nonprofits and community land trusts to ensure deeply affordable and stable housing. We think it would be perhaps a risk to the preservation ecosystem to preference one particular model over the other here and want, you know, all of the options and tools in our toolbox at this issue. Thanks.
Thank you all very much for your partnership.
Thank you.
Joined by Majority Whip Brooks Powers.
We feel, you know, believe deeply in the power of nonprofits and community land trusts to ensure deeply affordable and stable housing. We think it would be perhaps a risk to the preservation ecosystem to preference one particular model over the other here and want, you know, all of the options and tools in our toolbox at this issue. Thanks.
Thank you all very much for your partnership.
Thank you.
Joined by Majority Whip Brooks Powers. Okay, now we're moving to Zoom. So long as there's no one here in chamber who wants to testify. Seeing none, we're going to Zoom. Start with Alexis Foote.
Begin.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having this today. Dear, good morning, council. Dear Justin, Keith Powell, Gail Brewer, Your Honorable Adrian Adams. My name is Alexis. I am here today representing the Real Edgemere CLT, which stands for Residents Acquiring Land, as the founder and former board member, which is a community land trust in Far Rockaway. The Real Edgemere CLT is a member of the New York City Community Land Initiative and Alliance of Grassroots Affordable Housing, Environmental, and Economic Justice Organizations working to promote community land trusts, CLTs, and neighborhood-led development. We envision nourishing our neighbors' bodies and minds and spirits with the development of affordable homeownership, generational wealth, addressing teenage violence and unemployment, and creating economic opportunities that close the wealth gap for Black and Brown and immigrant and low-income families. We are thrilled to see that the council is moving to permanently sunset the tax lien sale. We support Intro 1407, sponsored by Speaker Adrian E. Adams, and Intro 420 being sponsored by Sandy Nurse. These intro bills would end the lien sale as we know it and facilitate a land bank for NYC that can oversee taxing sales and municipal debt. If you replace the taxing sale with the land bank, we should be able to save homes and apartment buildings that are being taken out of the rent stabilization status and Mitchell Lama stock. The taxing sale does not notify homeowners about their homes being included in the taxing sale. The taxing sale puts a financial burden on communities like mine that are already struggling with inadequate services and infrastructure. These bills will provide education and assistance to help homeowners avoid or manage the taxing sales, the taxing that's on their home. I went and did outreach in Far Rockaway, and there's a senior that's about to lose her home because she owes $33,000, and she doesn't understand the difference between JP Morgan
Thank you.
Right.
Just conclude, please.
These changes would include, I'm sorry, is my time up?
Yeah, I'll give you, I'll give you 15 more seconds. Just conclude, please.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to collaborating with the city council on replacing systems for municipal debt collection, the final component of the Community Land Act. As a, as a majority of this council has agreed, has agreed, our new system must, one, remunicipalize public debt collection, prevent displacement of homeowners and tenants, promote long-term affordability through community, I mean, through CLTs and partnerships with trusted, non-for-profit developers, and, four, create a pathway for productive use for vacant lots and unoccupied buildings. NYC must take a bold action to address our city's affordability crisis, combat displacement, and advance racial equity in housing and land use. Collective land ownership through CLTs is one of the most effective ways to achieve these public policies. Collective control and stewardship, climate resiliency and flood protection, neighborhood and humidities and cultural programming, affordable homeownership and transportation infrastructures. And I thank the council once again. Have a blessed day.
Thanks, Alexis. Okay, now we have William Spiesak.
You may begin.
Thank you, and good afternoon, committee chair and members of the Finance Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Will Spiesak. I'm a senior policy strategist at New Economy Project, a citywide organization that works with community groups to build a just economy for all. We're also the co-founders of the New York City Community Land Initiative, or nicely, a citywide coalition of 20 community land trusts across New York City that's working to develop deeply and permanently affordable housing and neighborhood-led development. I don't need to reiterate all the points that my colleagues have already made before me. I want to spend my two minutes summarizing the folly of the administration's objection to the bills before us. The DEP Commissioner, in his testimony, criticized the idea of, quote, "putting enforcement into the hands of an outside entity," end quote, in reference to the land bank. But then, the DOF Commissioner proceeded to explain that the current tax lien trust does just that. The city sells the right to collect, enforce, and potentially foreclose on property to a shadowy, investor-backed, and managed trust. So the question before this committee and the council is, who do we trust, no pun intended, with this tremendous power? An unaccountable, opaque, investor-backed trust that's sole objective is to maximize profit at the expense of communities? Or an intentionally designed body that will balance enforcement with equitable outcomes and contribute to the affordable and social housing priorities of the city by working with community land trusts, nonprofit developers, and the community development ecosystem in the city? If the latter option sounds better to you than council members, we implore you to vote for these bills and usher in a new era of municipal tax collection. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions, and I'll be submitting written testimony with more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Now we have Kevin Wolf.
You may begin.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Brennan, and to all the members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in strong support of the most important legislative reforms to New York City's tax lien sale program since it began under Mayor Giuliani. My name is Kevin Wolf, and I'm with the Center for New York City Neighborhoods. And I come to you on behalf of our homeowners, especially the low-to-moderate-income, Black and Brown homeowners who for too long have been treated as revenue to be leveraged rather than as the longtime pillars of the community that they are. The result has been unnecessary foreclosure, loss of generational wealth, and destabilization of the neighborhoods that can least afford it. Earlier this year, the center led a group of community-based organizations in outreach to help homeowners get off the lien sale. We held a total of 66 lien sale events, reached 15,000 homeowners through in-person outreach council, 2,885 clients, and contacted 5,300 homeowners through door knocking. And what we saw is that the lien, the tax liens are concentrated in only a few areas of the city. We were talking about southeast Queens, central Brooklyn, the North Bronx. We see that homes and the majority Black zip codes were six times more likely to be on the lien sale than homes in a majority-white zip code. And overwhelmingly, the homeowners we spoke to told us that they wanted to pay their taxes and water bills, but they couldn't afford to. Since 2008, our work with tens of thousands of distressed home New Yorkers across a wide range of challenges has shown that meaningful reform requires both strong borrower protections and targeted relief for those already in distress. We recommend implementing common-sense loss mitigation standards to prevent future abuses, and strong outreach to provide individualized housing counseling and financial counseling, along with coordination between the city agencies, the homeowners, and their advocates. This legislative package is a major step forward. It protects homeowners from aggressive foreclosure.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Let me just, I've got two more sentences left. I'm sorry. It protects homeowners from foreclosure by requiring the trust to wait until debts reach a meaningful threshold before trying to take away the home. It ensures transparency by requiring clear communication of legal action and quarterly billing, and options to resolve the debt. And finally, it strengthens oversight by requiring council approval and setting standards for buyer eligibility, impact, and community benefit in order to prevent this tax liens from being sold to bad actors. By passing this bill, the city council affirms that fiscal responsibility and justice can go hand in hand, protecting the city revenues as well as making sure homeowners continue to have their roofs over their heads. I urge the council to pass this legislation, and will be providing the rest of my testimony in writing. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Now we have Finley Dolma.
You may begin.
Finley Dolma. Okay, Ten-Ying Yangsel.
You may begin.
Ingrid Johnson.
You may begin.
Ingrid Johnson. Ingrid, I think you need to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Ingrid Johnson. I currently reside at and am an owner of 121 Martha Street in Bushwick, Brooklyn, New York. My councilmember is Sandy Nurse. I've lived in the home continuously since I was a child. I am the granddaughter of the owner in record, who died in 1988. My grandmother was left the home to her four children, including my father. My father passed away without a will in 2009. I live in the home with my two children at the ages of four and 11. In 2018, several of my grandmother's heirs were solicited by the, by a corporation called 206A Bergen Street Development Corp. to sell their shares of the property. And a few did so for the tiny fractions of its value. Although the significant priorities of the property is still owned within the family, the corporation is the only owner listed on the Department of Finance website. The corporation also solicited me. They are pushy and very disrespectful, and kept threatening that I will eventually be kicked out of my home, but still I do not cooperate with them. No one else lives in the home besides me and my children, and yet I did not get property tax bills. The year, this year, my home was on the tax lien sale. I called Brooklyn Legal Services. They advised me that since I was the owner and heir, I was qualified for both easy exit and property removal. Can I finish? Was my time up?
Yes, go ahead.
DOF had never advised me about these options. The problem with easy exits was that I required income documents from all the heirs, but I am the only heir, and would have not been impossible to coordinate. On May 28th, I took probate removal application to the DOF Financial Business Services in Brooklyn. The lien sale was supposed to take place on June 3rd, but as of June 11th, I had never received response. I asked Brooklyn Legal Services if they could take in, if they could look into it. Finally, on June 26th, Brooklyn Legal Services was able to confirm through its context that the probate removal application was approved on June 24th. However, I was still scared. My July property tax statement indicated that I was at risk for having my lien sold if I did not pay total amount owed. Again, again, I contacted Brooklyn Legal Services and was assured me that despite the misleading notice, I had been removed from the lien, lien sales. I understand the probate removal gave me two years to address the estate. I plan to keep my home within the family within, I wish, I wish DOA would, DOF would recognize me as one of the owners and work with me to figure out a plan moving forward. I am afraid of what the next tax lien sale will bring and whether the city will again threaten to sell my, sell my lien, putting me at risk of homelessness. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ingrid.
Thank you.
Okay, Finley Dolma or Ten-Yang Yangsel, last call. Okay. With that, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.